Yeah. Oh, I do the best. All right, be quick. That's her little sister. That's their mother.
Amazing.
You remember, she sat on my lap here in a council meeting.
Yeah, sixteen.
Always feels so loved.
Because it is.
It's not, there we go.
It's totally, my kids are little.
Like the noise.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the public hearing on Charter Amendment Resolution CAR twenty dash twenty-five dash two, a resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending section C dash seven twenty-three, purchasing and contract of the town charter to incorporate a provision allowing the council to waive the competitive procurement requirements set forth in that section for good cause upon certain conditions. Our council, Alyssa Levann, will bring us up to speed on this topic in just a moment.
Just a charter amendment. This is just a charter amendment to incorporate into your code provisions that many other jurisdictions have that allow council to waive the competitive bidding requirements to allow the procurement process to be more flexible. However, we've written in parameters to ensure that the procurement process continues to be transparent and to ensure that, in fact, the town continues to get the benefit of the best prices and proposals that are possible in the judgment of staff. So it's adding a new subsection J, which is on page two of your ordinance.
Hey, council members, any questions or comments?
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna pull it up here. Um. So I have been looking at this and having some discussions about it and I I do like the idea of, um, you know, stating stating your case is written in here that a statement and that an investigation has been concluded about why something would not be subject to an RFP. So I do like the transparency part of this, but I really do find that it's important to run an RFP as often as possible and get, you know, as many bids as you can. Clearly, sometimes you're only going to get one bid back, but at least you you made an effort in a bidding process to get the best price for the public. The only thing that I'm a little concerned about is is some of the wording in the new section J where it says, basically, it's kind of at the discretion of the council when when this would be waived and it's kind of based on the idea of public interest. And I would I would I would like to, when it comes time, when we when we go to consider this amendment, I would like to make a motion to amend to make it for emergency purposes only, not just flexible for whatever reason there is. So when it comes time, I'll make that motion.
Okay, other comments?
Interestingly, if we change it for emergency purposes, we might hinder some things that we've already been doing. And and looking further into how this has been, because it's just an amendment, it's something that we already have in place that we have already used for the water treatment plant and maybe some other things that still fall under the parameters of how we can do this. It's just that we're putting more safeguards in place. So we need to be really definitive about what new safeguards you want to put in place, what the actual process is for waiving competitive bidding, for making sure that we have the justification from investigations and things like that. I think if we are we're clearer about the process, then our staff will be better equipped to make sure that when this time comes and they present things to us as airtight. So I mean, I agree with you, you know, we still got to do things through the RFP. We still got to be very mindful about how we spend the town's money. But this right here isn't definitively about how we spend the money. This is about the access that the water treatment plant has, that that town engineers have when they have to do something that may take a longer time or waste time if we don't focus on making sure that we have this for emergency purposes or for purposes where we have something that not a lot of people are, not a lot of businesses are able to be able to be a part of. So I mean, I do agree with you, but it's not, you know, it's it's just with this little caveat that we're already doing these things. What we're doing is just tightening up a bit, if you really think about it that way, because if we're already doing it, but now we're looking at putting things in place to make sure that we have a viable process, then that means that's better for the future of the town even long after we're gone.
I think the important thing is what Alyssa mentioned is that other municipalities already have this in place, so it's it's not like it's something new.
Something. The ones that I'm familiar with don't look exactly like this, but they look a lot like this, right? So it's it was an attempt to craft some language towards the goal that you all were pursuing in terms of allowing yourself a little bit the ability to be a little bit more nimble, but without making it so unfettered by parameters that, you know, you completely undermine the purpose of the competitive bidding process. So yeah, this this idea that that staff is going to do an investigation like trying to contact other vendors or whatever the particular circumstances might justify so that they can in good faith come to you and say, look, we need to, we need to do this quickly and we don't think we're going to get a better price in another manner.
Right, and we'd still need four four votes to pass it anyway.
Yeah, and that, right, so that's, you point that out, that is a good point, that I wrote it so that there would be a super majority. So it's not an easy thing to do. It's not a thing where you're just going to be willy-nilly willy-nilly avoiding your competitive bidding process.
Yeah, anything that can help make things less complicated, I'm I'm on board with, as long as we have the safeguards in place, which it looks like we do.
You said this is similar to other municipalities, and I know the state of Maryland has provisions for both emergent and unusual procurement like this. Is there a reason why we didn't just point to the Maryland code and how does it differ from the Maryland code?
Oh, there's nothing in the Maryland code. It's in COMAR, the Code of Maryland Regulations, and it covers procurements by the states, but the states' procurements are enormous and complicated. So I don't know of any municipality that adopts the state's procurement processes because they would, they would do the opposite of what we're doing here. They would hamper you in large part because they're they're, it's so bureaucratic.
And so in your opinion, this these parameters that you laid out for us are legally supportable.
Yeah.
And provide the right balance of flexibility and responsibility.
Yes, that's exactly what I was trying to do.
Well, I'll make a comment. So this was a part of our discussion when we're doing the water and sewer rates. So section C seven twenty-three I, there's a statement in there that talks about unusual. And when I brought this up, when we were looking at procuring an emergency situation, it was an emergency situation, but we're looking at procuring somebody to come in and do the water and sewer audits. I had specifically called out that as our code and saying, there's not enough in there for us to actually understand how to approach unusual. And that was the initial driver for us to do this. So when I look at this, this just kind of clarifies and actually puts a little meat and some teeth behind what's already in our code, which is is very ambiguous right now. And we did not feel as a council comfortable moving forward with the with any kind of funding over sixty thousand dollars because of the language that was currently written, so.
One more question for the attorney. So, but two-thirds majority vote is the same as a simple majority vote for this council, correct? Since we have six people, we need four votes.
That is not my strong point. So your you, your majority is four, so you might want to say by five. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, so if we wanted to make it five, to make it more, you know, deliberate, what type of wording will we put there? Just.
Five members of the council.
Okay.
What would you recommend by rather than four?
Well, you could you could have four. It's just a regular majority and then we would just strike the two-thirds vote. Because it doesn't add anything. That's up to you. I mean, the intention is to make it an unusual thing that requires more of an intention on the part of the council. It's great to say, we understand this is an unusual circumstance that requires us to do this. And so it just brings a little bit more gravity to the decision, in my view.
Can I ask what when at the the last administration changed the the veto? Right, and what did they, what did they change it to? Four is what you need to override the the mayor?
No.
Are you sure about that?
It's always been five. And they were discussing eliminating the veto, but I don't know if.
Yeah, but they made it, I thought they made a change. And I think they reduced the amount of votes. Because I, so I would ask is like, whatever we do, I just, I think it should be consistent with all of it.
Alyssa is looking it up.
Now, take your time. I want to get this right.
Vote of five-sixth of the whole council. It's not look like that was changed, at least not according to your codifiers. The last change to the section appears to have been made in 2010. I I can't. I promised you that, but that's what it appeared.
They did something late in their term, but I don't know. I don't remember exactly what it was. I think you're right. I believe that you're right.
It looks like they might have made a change to a different provision, the referendum provisions. I don't know what that changes are, but there was some change in February of 2024 to the referendum section.
I think I think what Eric is referring to occurred later, if I remember. It was toward the.
Like July, August.
Yeah, I think it was.
Well, I'm just trying to find, because there was like the a handful of meetings in, no, I think it was either October or November, and there was a bunch of stuff that was being rushed through at the very end of the last administration. And one of them, because there was, I remember specifically a gentleman standing right here saying that Congress does this. Why are we changing against what the the federal institution does? And why are we doing separate? And they still voted yes. So there was, I mean, I could be wrong, and I'm going to Google it here in a second. I'm going to go back and find all the the stuff, but there was definitely something. Otherwise, that gentleman sat up here for three minutes and talked about constitutional law for no reason.
But okay, but what I'm asking is, what is the relationship to the hearing that we're having?
Well, I would say that if 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 the council can override the mayor with a simple majority, why would we have, why would we require a super majority for execution of funding that the council then would support? So we look inconsistent in our voting procedures, in my opinion.
So, but currently, in fact, the charter says five-sixths. So it would be if I change this to five-sixths, it would be consistent.
Yep, it would have, like in this situation, when we're down a council member, how many votes would it would it take?
It would have to be all.
All five.
Okay, other questions or comments on this?
Given that there is that mayoral veto and it takes a five-sixth majority, do we want to change it to a simple majority action?
I'm in favor of that.
I I would stick with, I just probably said I would stick with consistency across the board. So I would, whatever the charter states right now for the mayors is what I would, I would be in favor of. But again, everybody has.
So I'll be making two separate motions, one to change the two-thirds to five-sixths, and then the other to add some emergency language when it comes time.
Any other comments or questions before we close the public hearing?
Before motion, before voting on that motion, can I get a little bit more clarification on what the emergency verbiage would probably be?
Absolutely. When we go, when it's time to vote on that, and I'll make a motion, I'll explain exactly.
Okay, just want to make sure we know.
Okay. Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Like to call together the town council meeting for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We're only three minutes late. That's not bad, considering the amount of discussion. Roll call will note that all current members of the town council are present. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I'm not sure whose turn it is.
Birthday.
I can do that. Pledge of allegiance. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda or does anybody have amendments?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. This is the opportunity for the public to make comment on anything on the agenda. Hello, Debbie, how are you? Thank you. I cannot believe I'm twenty-nine, because I'm not.
On the administration report for today, addressing the rental reviews, the laws and aspects of it. I would like to try to suggest that we have a landlord advisory committee before we start making changes. The landlords need some voice in these changes. We need to have some kind of help with some things because it's out of problems right now. We have landlords that can't go to court to evict tenants because some of them don't have rental licenses because of our system is not up to date. And they're leaving tenants in the property to destroy them and be four months behind on rent. And that's not right, that the town holds a rental license and stuff for it. Okay, so they need some input in this. Some of them don't pay taxes, others do. But their tenants do, and they also have rights on their property, and you're tying their hands in some cases.
And actually, I'm familiar with some of the issues that you are describing, and and I firmly believe that we need to go through and clean up this code, make improvements, make corrections, and I thank you for bringing that to the attention of the council. Well.
And they're together, they're complete.
We've, we've, we've had some meetings already. I think you may be aware of those. And we, I'm certainly open to that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
Yeah.
Thanks for your input. Any other public comment by anybody that wants any item that's on the agenda? Yes, sir. If you'd identify yourself and let us know who you're.
My name's Buck Jackson. I live over in Richfield Station. I'm actually filling in and delivering a message for my homeowners association president, Ms. Joyce Hamer.
Okay.
She's actually getting married today, so thanks to her.
Is that any excuse to skip the town council meeting? I mean.
But she had wrote something, so if y'all don't mind, I'll just kind of reword it in.
Go ahead.
Like I said, I'm just doing a favor. This is to Mr. Berry and Dr. Okapodu. I hope I didn't.
Okapodu, you did pretty good.
My name is Joyce Hamer, and I serve as the president of the Richfield Station Condo Townhouse Association, Section Five, the newest section on Clear Spring Drive, comprising of sixteen units. I moved into my townhouse on January two thousand fourteen and endured substandard road conditions for over eleven years. While I understand the developers' obligation to finish the roads, only once construction was complete, allowing ten years for that process has proven unreasonable, and we've now exceeded that timeline. We've been more than patient, and it is my hope the town can expedite a resolution. Please note that this matter is not about aesthetics, but rather concerns ongoing key issues that are having unfortunate consequences for residents, such as the incomplete road work continues to deteriorate the pavement. It's every rain, there's going to be more spalling. My biggest thing is the manhole covers and the safety of pedestrians and kids. I've personally seen every one of my three children wipe out on that road, and I've seen other people's kids break their ankles on the curbs or the manhole covers. I spill my coffee almost every day on myself on the manhole covers, so that's just me. But multiple accidents, like I said, lots of bicycle wrecks at night. The other thing was just a broader community impact. Other units at the top of Clear Spring Drive and the entire Crestview section, they're also affected because they have to come down there. Also, we just saw people that were basically right above us. They had very nice roads. They were just paved. So for some reason, they got theirs done, but we couldn't get ours done because of a loophole, essentially. I think, you know, this is now off script now, that was it. But me personally, like I said, I have three kids. Safety is pretty paramount. All the kids are always around my house in the neighborhood. There's forty homes that live on that unpaved area. That's over forty people that own their homes and are feeling the same way. She actually got seventy-eight signatures for support on this. I know we brought it up before, but I really hope y'all can like poke this with a stick and see what happens again. I know that there's a loophole to stuff, but I know that there's a way around loopholes.
Well, I'd like to share with you that we have engaged with the developer, Mike Repke. I think in the previous administration, he had fundamentally refused to have any contact with the previous administration after a period of time. And I'm, I'm not going to promise anything, but at least we've got a dialogue going and we are getting some positive feedback. And can you add anything to that, Samelia?
Absolutely. So myself and Jay Berry, along with the mayor and our town attorney and our planning and zoning administrator have all taken a couple of trips out to Richfield Station just so we could really make sure we understood what was going on and also figure out what place we could, role we could play in in remedying it. So right now, after that initial field trip, we had the developer come in and engage in some conversations with him. From that, it was, the tone was positive, which is a departure from where things have been, at least for the past eight years to my, to my knowledge. So that's promising. There were documents that we asked for him to provide, and he did. So we're, right now, we're in the the stage of reviewing the documents that he's provided, and we'll figure out how to move forward with him, because ultimately, it would be ideal if he was the one who fixed the the issue, because it's for him to fix. So we were trying to to leverage the goodwill that we have right now to get it resolved. But I know that this administration and the mayor especially is committed to doing what we can do to make sure that the residents that are negatively impacted by it are heard and accommodated.
Okay. Yeah, and is any possibility you could leave a copy of that with us?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That would be helpful and.
I can see. Signatures included there?
Okay, yeah, that was great. Yeah, thank you very much. And, you know, we are aware of the situation and 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 we're we're continuing to move forward. Unfortunately, it doesn't go as fast as we would like for it to, but at least we're moving forward. It's not, it's not stopped. It's not dead stopped anymore. And thank you very much for coming and share with your H O A president that we appreciate the 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 input.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay. Any other public comment on anything on the agenda? All right, is there a motion for the approvals of the minutes of the June twelfth public hearings?
Motion to approve.
They're second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the June twelfth town council meeting?
Motion to approve.
They're second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Close.
The ayes have it. Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the July eighth, twenty twenty-five special town council meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You got, you beat me. You didn't even let me ask for it a second. All in favor, say aye.
We're getting the hang of it.
Aye.
You're getting the hang of it, yes.
All right.
Are you ready for this? Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the town council informational work session on July eighth?
Motion with amendment.
Okay.
This is for Kathleen. She actually adjourned the meeting on that one. And I seconded, I remember, I pointed to her and she, it was her last meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
This is a minor.
Well, it's important to get it right. Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes of the work session?
So we have to abstain. You weren't at the work session.
It's just.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Man, just go ahead. All right, approve the amended work session minutes.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of you that are allowed to say aye. You can see we take ourselves very seriously. And in that line, I'd like to introduce the president of Calvert Health Foundation, Jeremy Bradford, and welcome and your team with you, if you would introduce your team. But thank you for being here, and I also want to thank you for your hospitality at the hospital at the event that I was invited to participate in. And I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say, and please introduce your colleagues.
So first, uh, I just had, one of our colleagues had to leave to go to another meeting, and that's Larissa Goganser.
Okay.
Larissa just joined us as a senior vice president of operations.
Okay.
Larissa comes to us with uh, over thirty years of experience in hospital operations as well as construction management. And then she's a nurse by training. So as you'll hear tonight, with all the great work going on with construction, as well as the improvements that we're making with how we're delivering care at Calvert Health, Larissa was a perfect fit in our national search. Also, I have with me uh, Missy Carnes, who's the interim uh, executive director of the foundation.
Welcome. Good to see you again.
Missy is absolutely phenomenal in her grant writing ability as well as fundraising for our organization to advance the mission.
Does she do any moonlighting?
No, we, we don't allow that, not. She's a, she's a GM, and we're, we're blessed to have on our team, and she's serving in the interim role into our new executive director starts later this month.
Thank you.
And last but not least, is Kasia Sweeney, our vice president of strategy and business development.
Welcome.
Who will be joining me tonight in the presentation.
Okay.
Uh, before I get started with my remarks, Mayor, on behalf of the over twelve hundred employees at Calvert Health and our board members, both in the foundation as well as the health system, we'd just like to say happy birthday to you, and we got a little gift for you. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Really appreciate it. Look at all the goodies.
We aim to please in our organization.
Do. Thank you. Uh, I, I, I will share with you before you start that uh, I spent two days with my wife there last week because she had blood transfusions prior to surgery. She had a Georgetown University Hospital this past Monday, and your staff and everybody, it, it went perfectly. And uh, she didn't need the second one, which was a real blessing. So um, but it, you know, the servant, the, the care that you all provide is just amazing. So I'm so glad that you're here. I'm so glad that we're getting a good dialogue going, especially with the whole council.
Same here. And I, I do want to say thank you to the, the mayor and the council members for your ongoing support. You've afforded us the opportunity to come and present updates, which is very important to us to stay closely connected with you all. Because we're only as good as the people that we surround ourselves with, and that's the community, our employees and our volunteers. So with that, I just wanted to, to recognize a couple of things as we embark on our work. I had the opportunity to introduce several members of the team, and, and I want to reiterate, um, I'm a true believer. I chose to get into healthcare to make a difference. And every single one of our employees and our volunteers in our organization strive every single day to exceed the expectations of those who entrust their care into us. So what you're gonna see tonight, and Kasia's gonna be sharing more information, but I'm gonna highlight a number of different accolades that we've received. Um, in the very uh, recent future uh, or recent time, and we're expecting additional uh, accolades into the future that uh, will be coming out soon. But, uh, excuse me, first, I just wanted to recognize that we were named one of the top one hundred hospitals in the country as listed in Forbes by Premier. And one thing that I want to share with you last night, I had the opportunity to accept this award last night uh, at the Gaylord in National Harbor on behalf of our employees, and I sat in a room with other health system leaders across fifty states. And it was an honor to represent Calvert Health to be there, and we accepted that award very proudly. So thank you. Also, if that wasn't enough, being in the top one hundred in the health systems across the country, our metabolic and bariatric surgery program received national accreditation as you'll note up on the screen. Uh, with that, uh, we are continuing to advance the work of weight management and bariatric, not just, and you're gonna hear this from Kasia in Calvert County, but we're expanding those services outside the county as well. Next, I wanted to recognize the work that we achieved the first go-around, and for those of you that are familiar with Great Places to Work certification, we strived in our strategic plan to achieve that uh, in by twenty twenty-eight. Well, we were lucky enough in our first attempt to achieve Great Places to Work, and that's a true testament to the culture of the organization. Not only did we achieve it, as far as the benchmarks, we far exceeded them. And uh, that just goes to, to speak to our leadership in our organization, our board, as well as our employees. Next, uh, our health grades, uh, which is a national recognized organization, awarded Calvert Health for outstanding, outstanding patient experience for placing us among the top fifteen percent of hospitals in the nation with our overall experience. So top one hundred and top fifteen percent of hospitals nationwide with regard to our overall patient experience, which falls in line with Mayor Walworth, which you were talking about with your wife's experience. Also, uh, we earned the American Heart Association's highest honor for outstanding stroke care, the Go Plus Achievement Award is what they call it, for the thirteenth year in a row. And last but not least, we were recently uh, named one of Becker's top places to work in healthcare for the second year in a row. These recognitions, as I pointed out, underscore what's possible when you define clear vision, building a strategic roadmap, which we have done, and aligning our entire organization behind it, from those who are on the front line to the board members who are moving us forward from a governance standpoint. Great things happen, not just within the health system, but throughout the community we serve. I also wanted to share with you some figures about the number of patients uh, that we serve and members that we serve on an annual basis. I first want to point out the number of patients that we are carrying for at the Twin Beaches Primary Care uh, Community Health Center. Over seven thousand uh, individuals entrusted their care into us at our Twin Beaches Primary Care location. And we've added yet another provider to further expand our access to that location. Also, I wanted to share with you our ongoing advancement within our medical group, eighty-five thousand visits within our medical group. We're continuing to expand our medical group, and you're gonna hear more about that from Kasia. But also our outpatient visits that we see within our, our hospital outside of the medical group. Total surgical procedures uh, right at four thousand, three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two. Our emergency department, right at thirty-five thousand, almost thirty-six thousand, and then four hundred and seventy deliveries. And you're gonna hear some exciting news tonight that the work that's embarking on our family birth center, our women's health service line. And lastly, into the hospital, about fifty-three hundred admissions. But one area that I wanted to note for you all is the importance of volunteers in our organization. As you know, with volunteers, they don't get paid to do the work. They give of their time, the most precious thing that they could possibly give. And there's not a day that goes by that we do not encounter our volunteers going far and above to serve our patients and their families, whether it be in the emergency department or delivering items up to the floor or working in our gift shop. So I just wanted to recognize the over fourteen thousand hours that our volunteers contribute to Calvert Health. Also, I just wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge um, that how grateful we are for the collaboration with the town council. As we continue this work, I, I just ask that you embrace us and, and work with us as we're continuing to enhance the services to this community. This community is very important to Calvert Health, and we want to continue to expand upon our quality of care, not only to the patients, but also to their families who entrust their care into us. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kasia Sweeney, who's gonna go over items related to our strategic plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Kasia Sweeney. I'm the vice president for strategy and business development at Calvert Health. And so I've had the great honor and privilege of working with Jeremy and our board and our physicians and our employees and so many members of our community to not only develop our strategic plan, but now really to put our plan into action. So I know we were here before to share the outline of our strategic plan, and I hope you'll be excited to hear the great work that's happened over these last two years. So just a refresher, uh, obviously, we have a mission, vision and values that we live by every day at Calvert Health. And we talk about these on our nine o'clock patient safety huddle every morning. Our mission is to improve the health and well-being of the people we serve. Our vision is to be the trusted healthcare leader, delivering a lifetime of exceptional care. And we do all of that with a focus on quality, compassion, teamwork, diversity and integrity in everything we do. Our strategic plan has six major components to it. First is culture incompetence, and we'll talk about each of these in order. The second is primary care. The third is outpatient services. You just heard Jeremy talk a little bit about that in terms of volume. The fourth is clinical service lines, and the four clinical service lines that we are focusing on are cancer care, digestive disease and weight management, women's health and orthopedics and sports medicine. That doesn't mean we're not doing other things. Obviously, we, we take care of all kinds of patients, but those are four key areas of focus for us. Community hospital care, that's the running of the hospital every day, making sure there are great services available there. And then our partnerships in the community with folks like yourselves. We cannot do it by ourselves. And especially in a place like Calvert County, I think it's such a blessing that so many people come together to support the healthcare system. So in those six areas, our internal plan has a total of three hundred and sixty-seven line items that we are committed to achieving over the five-year planning horizon. We're just reaching the midpoint of our five years now, uh, just, just right around two years. And so far, we've completed fifty-six percent of those three hundred and sixty-seven items. So just right around the midpoint, right where we want to be, and looking forward to the next couple of years. So starting with culture and competence, the first thing that we wanted to make sure we had in place for Calvert Health was a really strong infrastructure, workforce, quality of care, safety, uh, all the pieces that are required from a foundational aspect to deliver on our promise to the community. So Jeremy mentioned our Great Place to Work certification. We're so proud of that, and that, I think, reflects the investments we've made in trying to make sure that we have a strong workforce. And we're committed to education and development and fair pay and strong recruitment and retention practices there. We've had a laser focus on quality, safety and accountability. And since Jeremy's been here and we started this plan, we've enacted a number of new things that are helping all of our team members focus on that. I mentioned a nine o'clock huddle, so every morning, every member of our leadership team is talking about what's happening in the health system and focusing on those issues of most importance to our patients. We also have huddle boards in every department of the health system now, and so this is actually a picture of our executive team. Every Tuesday, we meet at our huddle board, and that's our opportunity to review the metrics across the health system and make sure that we're meeting our goals for our patients. We also have had a big project this last year looking at efficiency, patient access to care. Our goal is to be the highest quality, lowest cost provider with great access for patients in our community. So huge undertaking with a consulting group this last year to focus on that. And then lastly, in this area, we also want to think about what it feels like to come to a Calvert Health facility. So we've spent a lot of time and effort focusing on patient satisfaction. You heard our outcomes there, as well as the physical environment. And you'll see some of that as I show you pictures this evening of new areas we've been developing. Our goal is when you come to Calvert Health, it feels like a Calvert Health experience, and it's recognizable from one place to the next as you move through the health system. Our second area of focus is primary care. Ideally, patients would be interacting with us in the primary care doctor's office and not in the hospital emergency department. We want to take care of people out in the community and make sure they have great access to care. Calvert County is a tough place to recruit, so we've put a lot of focus on recruiting primary care doctors to our community. And we're excited to have five new providers who have joined our primary care team. As Jeremy mentioned, one is here in the Twin Beaches area. Uh, there are additional in Solomons and in Prince Frederick. We're also expanding our space in Prince Frederick to accommodate even more providers. And we are excited to be submitting for some Maryland hospital bond funding to continue to go grow primary care, expanding and renovating our space in Prince Frederick, expanding and renovating the space here in Twin Beaches in collaboration with the community here, and then also in Solomons. So along with primary care services outside the hospital, we wanted to focus on making sure that there is a good access network. So wherever you live in the county, you can reach a provider and you can reach services long before you need the hospital. We have a partnership for urgent care, you may be aware, in Dunkirk and Solomons and Prince Frederick with Patriot Urgent Care. We have worked with them to acquire an additional urgent care facility just over the bridge in California, which is helping us better serve that southern end of our demographic as well. We expanded our weight management program, and we'll talk about this a little more in that clinical service line with a new site in Waldorf. We've made improvements to our outpatient rehab services process in order to accommodate more patients. And these are a few pictures of a new suite that we just opened in Solomons. Actually, it opens August first in Solomons to be able to rotate additional specialists down into the southern end of the county. Our clinical service lines I mentioned, cancer care, digestive disease and weight management, orthopedics and women's health. One of the major initiatives that we undertook this year in partnership with Duke, who you know is our, our collaborative partner for cancer care, was to start a clinical research and clinical trials program. That's a huge undertaking. In my twenty-five years at Calvert, we've never been able to accomplish having the availability of clinical trials for our cancer patients here in the local community, and we now have the infrastructure for that and have started our first clinical studies, which is a great opportunity for patients who need that. We also started a multidisciplinary breast clinic. We've been doing education for providers across the region. We have a new oncology director with a lot of experience coming to help us continue to grow over the next few years. And our community wellness team has helped with podcasts and outreach for cancer prevention programs. In digestive disease and weight management, we started a bariatric program for obesity surgery a few years ago. We've now treated two hundred and eighty patients through that bariatric program. And we expanded in this last year to add a larger complement of weight management services. So some people who are struggling with weight issues are appropriate for a surgical resolution. Others may need to go through a medical weight management, fitness, dietitian services. So we now have nurse practitioners that are working in our digestive disease and weight management program. And we've got two really great surgeons who are fellowship trained with a ton of experience who are helping lead the program for our patients. So we have an office in Prince Frederick and then also one in Waldorf. And these are the pictures of the new site in Waldorf that we just opened this last year. And lastly, Jeremy mentioned that we achieved our MBSA QIP accreditation, which it took me a long time to master that acronym. Basically, that is a national accreditation. A surveyor comes on site. They look at everything that we're doing for our patients. They do chart reviews. They meet with the staff. There's a whole book of standards that we need to follow. And we were so grateful to have achieved accreditation with no deficiencies. Orthopedics and sports medicine, you may realize we have an aging population in Calvert County. Not me. I'm not part of that. I'm going the other direction myself.
Did you say that because it's my birthday?
No, it's your twenty-nine. I think we already established that.
I can't remember that far back.
We, we do have a, a need for orthopedics here, both in sports medicine for younger families, as well as for folks who might be dealing with different challenges at different stages in life. And while we've had great orthopedic physicians here, we also recognize that they too are um, have been in the county a long time and are approaching retirement age. So we really needed a strong infrastructure that would be sustainable, that we could recruit young new physicians to and help us continue to develop that service line. So we hired Dr. Uday Patel, who some of you may have had some experience with, as our medical director for our hospital-based program. And we opened a new center in Prince Frederick for orthopedic medicine. And then finally, women's health, which has been a huge labor of love, especially for me personally, because obviously I, I care about women's health in this community, and I have delivered my own children at Calvert Health. Particularly post-COVID, it's been very difficult to recruit for OB-GYN providers. And as our providers started to retire, it became obvious to us that we needed to really make some investments in developing a top-notch program if we wanted to continue to have that service in a robust way for our community. So we started with implementing a new coordinated care model. And basically what that means is in the past, you would have gone to your OB doctor and seen them in the practice, and then that same doctor would run over to the hospital and deliver your baby and then run back to the practice. And truthfully, that is not the model of care that's being delivered anymore. I loved that in the old days, and I think our doctors did too. But it's very difficult to recruit physicians from coming out of residency today into that type of practice model. They really want to focus on one thing or the other at any given time, and that really also makes sense from a safety perspective. So we now have a team of OB-GYNs that staffs the hospital and delivers the babies. And then we have a team that works in the practice and sees all the patients on the outpatient basis. And there is some crossover, so some doctors do both things, but they. And there is some crossover, so some doctors do both things, but they don't do both things at the same time. So they might be in the hospital on Monday, in the office on Tuesday. In order to facilitate that change, we also hired a nurse navigator to help with coordinating the care for the patients since they might see multiple different providers. In addition to that, we invested in opening a brand new fifteen thousand square foot women's center on the campus that just opened in the last two weeks. We're going to have a big kickoff in the fall, so we'll make sure that all of you have invitations to come take a tour. But our goal is to have our OB-GYN providers along with specialists to deliver a full range of women's health services. And we've been working on recruiting additional providers as well as developing a partnership with a regional health provider to bring some of those specialists to Calvert County. We are also very excited to be planning for a new family birth center. So our family birth center was renovated twenty five years ago, I think the last time. And while they deliver great care there, it looks like twenty five years ago when you go in. And we need to, to make some updates to modernize it. And there's also new technology and new ways of delivering care where a patient stays in one room the whole time. It's called a labor delivery postpartum room. So, oops. We are renovating our center to create five new labor delivery and postpartum rooms. And we will also be moving the nurses station to create the, better visibility for our nursing staff. And it's all part of our major investment in women's health. Community hospital care, we're excited to have started a robotics program. We've now done three hundred and ten robotic surgeries at Calvert Health, which is very exciting. We're continuing to grow that every day and every year. In behavioral health, we have a partnership with Shepherd Pratt, and we are continuing to invest in growing that partnership to make sure that we're providing great services for patients who need that as a resource. We've also upgraded our MRI or in the process of upgrading our MRI and made a number of lab updates as well. And then finally, in community partnerships, we have a whole team who's dedicated to working with the health department, other post-acute care providers and organizations in the community to deliver on our promise of great healthcare. So we published a community health needs assessment plan, and part of that plan is outreach. I know they've recently been doing a lot of outreach with the Ladies of Charity Food Pantry, which is close to you all here. I think they've been coming on a monthly basis, and now that there's a little more space available there, our mobile health unit will be coming once a month there to do cancer screenings and blood, like blood glucose and cholesterol screenings for patients as well. And that's it. That's the last two years at Calvert Health in ten minutes or whatever that took.
Well, I, I, I thank you for, for all of you for being here. Um, and it's, uh, you know, many of you know the various health issues that I've had over the years. And the fact that I'm standing here on my seventy seventh birthday and chairing this meeting means that I've gotten some great healthcare or else I wouldn't be here. Uh, a lot of it was through Calvert Health, a lot of it was through other, other places, but, uh, other providers. Um, but, uh, I'm, uh, I'm just grateful that, uh, that you all are doing the work. And, and the forward-looking things that you've shared with us tonight are very encouraging. And so let us know what we can do as a town government to support and help you. And council members, anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, do you guys have any type of programs, um, geared towards career advancements? Uh, for people who might come in as a CNA that want to become an LPAN or a nurse and things like that?
Uh, we absolutely do. I'm not sure I'm the perfect person to explain all of them, so Jeremy, you jump in if I miss anything. But, uh, we definitely focus on career development. We understand that especially folks who are coming in on those entry-level positions, the best thing we can do is help them grow to be nurses or, or other types of technicians and stay in the county. So our foundation funds scholarship, um, scholarships and support. Our nursing department has developed a number of different career ladders so that people can advance in their pay and advance in their training. And this last year, we also have, I think they've had cohorts of, uh, new graduate nurses that come and are precepted in our organization and then given job opportunities. We have a nurse residency program to help new nurses get launched in our organization. And I believe we funded quite a few, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, quite a few CNAs and even some like housekeeping and environmental services staff that were interested in pursuing other types of healthcare careers, and we had funding available to support them. We also have tuition reimbursement, full-time employees there as well.
Anything else?
Yeah, are you involved in, are you all involved in, um, uh, like a lot of the veterans health stuff? So I, you know, I, I hear of Easter seals over in the, the DMV area. And just, I know there's a large veteran population here, myself and another one, Lori over there. Do you guys, oh, sorry, there's like eight of us out here. Sure, plenty of not, and so anybody I missed, I apologize. Uh, sorry, uh, yes, um, do you guys do anything, uh, in that regards?
Well, we certainly are committed to serving our veteran population as well as our active duty military. And the, uh, leaders at the Patuxent River Naval Air Station have been very closely aligned with us. We meet on a regular basis with them to talk about the needs for the populations that they serve and figure out how we can be part of that. When you talk about career advancement, actually, we've even been helping the Naval Air Station with career advancement for some of their techs who need a, a place to be supported as they grow with their careers and, and have an opportunity to work in a hospital setting, which they don't always have in, in the, the Naval Air Station. So yes, definitely. And I actually just reached out recently to someone who I encountered who has become, I believe he's like a, um, appointed by the governor to support Veterans Affairs. So I was asking him, what are the things that we can do to continue to try and grow that engagement? Mental health services as well, I think, is often.
Big one.
A big one, yeah. Did I miss anything?
I would just add too that we actually have been partnering with them for lab services as well. I was with Captain Martin Zamatis, who was just, uh, sworn in today, uh, down at PAX. And, uh, Mark and I have been working as well as with the team there, as Kasia pointed out, to really further expand the services and the access to care. And we actually also want to work, when you talk about career development, those who are retiring outside the military, offering them opportunities within our organization. So we've already embarked and started some of that work with those who have just recently retired. So we're working very closely with armed forces. But also I would just add that Liz Chanley, Judge Chanley's wife, is our patient advocate. And when veterans come into our facility and they disclose that, we actually go up and recognize them with a gift and with the acknowledgement, and Liz Chanley leads that work for us.
Very cool. Thank you.
Um, thank you all for being here. I've, uh, I've, I've now lived in Calvert County for forty years, so I've seen tremendous change in Calvert healthcare. And the resources and facilities and, and services that you provide have come a very long way in that period of time. Uh, it's also interesting to note that the population in Calvert County is three times what it was when I moved here, uh, forty years ago. So, uh, it seems like you're moving along with, uh, what you need to do to, to support the community. And, and we, uh, we're, I think, I can safely say we're all grateful for everything that you're doing. And we appreciate your being here tonight and sharing with us.
We certainly appreciate all of your partnership and your support, so thank you very much. And thank you for the opportunity to share our story.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have, uh, Ashley Shawarsky. Did I mess that up?
That was really good.
Okay, thank you. Senior Director of Business Development for the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program by HomeServe. Thank you for being here.
Oh, well, thanks, um, Mayor and Council for having me here this evening. Happy birthday. Thanks for spending it with me. Um, but yeah, um, my name's Ashley Shawarsky, and I do represent, uh, the National League of Cities Service Line Program. So our program here, we're the only one that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also in Maryland, where we are partnered with the Maryland Municipal League as well, too. The company, though, that I actually work for is called Home Serve, and we administer the program. And we've been lucky to offer this program here in the US for over twenty years and have been endorsed, um, by the National League of Cities since twenty ten, really working with municipalities all across the country. We currently are partnered with over thirteen hundred municipalities and utilities and serve just under five million customers across the country. But just to give you a little background of how this program was developed, obviously, we all know aging infrastructure is an issue for cities and towns all across the US. And we know the city, the town here is doing their best to either upgrade or maintain your public infrastructure. But the homeowners portion of these water and sewer lines were kind of being forgotten about. Not on purpose, we just know as a town, there's only so much that you can do on a resident's private side or force them to do on their side as much as you'd probably like to be able to. So that is why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the country. They went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company they chose to provide the program. So what we actually do is we partner with the town in order to make our completely optional protection available to your residents here. And we provide homeowners with protection on their external water or well lines, sewer or septic lines, and their in-home plumbing. And we always provide these services with a complete turnkey approach for the town where we handle all the aspects of the program. So we do the marketing, the billing, the claims management and customer service. And there's absolutely no cost to the town if you decide to make this program available to your residents. And the town would receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation. What I though always think is the best benefit of this program is it really helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every community that I speak with across the country, I hear that same thing, that if a resident does have some type of issue on one of these lines in their front yard, a lot of times their first call is to someone here. And then the staff is either left sending someone out to investigate using your time and dollars or just being that bearer of bad news that no one ever wants to be explaining to the resident, you know, at the worst time possible, that these lines are not covered by the town or typically their homeowner's insurance. So that is really why I think of this program as a free public awareness campaign, because all of your residents would receive a letter in the mail from us, and the beginning of that letter is educational. So that way, even if they don't enroll in protection, at least now they know which portion of these lines that they're responsible for, can better prepare themselves for the future, and just that the town did try to take that proactive approach and help and educate them of that. So that way, if they still call you here, it just makes the conversation a little, a little bit easier for everyone. Also, a large benefit of our program is that we would only use local area plumbers and contractors to do all of our repairs. So if we did partner with the town, we would develop a contractor network to serve your residents' claims. And the group here could be as much or as little involved in that as you like to be, where some of our municipal partners will provide us a list of plumbers that are familiar in the community that you already work with. Some don't want to get involved. Either way is fine with us. But with all of those plumbers, we do go through a vetting process to verify they are from the local community, they meet your licensing requirements, um, as well as we do background checks and drug screenings. We just want to make sure it's someone your residents feel comfortable coming to their home and inside of their home. And as for the important thing, what our program covers, we do offer three completely separate and optional protections. We offer an external water line protection, which also covers private well lines, an external sewer line protection, which also covers private septic lines, and an in-home plumbing. And I always just kind of think by partnering with us, you're just making these coverages available to your residents that otherwise would not be. But it's always up to them if they enroll, if they enroll in any of the protections in whatever combination. They're kind of à la carte, so they can pick and choose what's the best fit for them. Um, the first two I will talk about are the external options, just because they're set up almost identically. So if a resident decides to enroll either the external water line protection or the external sewer line protection, we cover those lines wherever they become the resident's responsibility, all the way to where they enter their home. So if a homeowner is having an issue, whether it's a broken, a cracked, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog, anything that really impedes the flow of those lines. Um, we also do cover the thawing of frozen external water lines, not that I want to think about that in, um, July, but we cover the thawing of frozen external water lines. Um, we make it very simple for a resident. If they have an issue, they call us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We'll send out that plumber. The plumber will go to their house to see what is causing the issue, and they repair or replace the line as needed. What's nice about our protection is your homeowner would receive up to eight thousand five hundred dollars towards each and every incident. They can have as many incidents as they need in a calendar year. Um, that eight thousand five hundred includes street repair, um, if that's their responsibility, sidewalk repair, all permitting costs. So we mon- monitor those plumbers to make sure they're following your codes and getting all of the proper permits. Um, and the resident, again, receives up to that eight thousand five hundred per incident, can have as many incidents as they need. And we do not have any type of service fee or call-out fee, because we don't want that to stop your resident from actually giving us a call and getting their issues taken care of. And then in addition to the external options, we also do offer an in-home plumbing. And that kind of was developed by request of our municipal partners, as it was that missing piece of the puzzle. And that covers any of the water, sewer or drain lines in the resident's home after the point of entry that could be broken or leaking. It also includes lines in their slab or basement floor and the repair of clogged toilets. And that is similar again, no service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit, no limit on number of claims. And our in-home, your resident receives up to three thousand dollars towards each and every incident. And we really do come to find when someone enrolls in any of these options, they're just a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of, because we often hear, um, you know, residents are nervous to call a plumber, uh, because they don't know how much it's going to cost them out of pocket, or they don't know who to call. But now they know the cost of determining their issue and getting it taken care of isn't coming out of their pocket. And then lastly, I know the big thing everyone wants to know is what is the town's involvement in the program? So we really do handle all the aspects of the program. Um, what we do is we enter into a marketing agreement with the town, and that just lays out how we get the word out, which is through direct mail. So that is really your only involvement in the program, is before we send anything out to your homeowners here, we would work with the group to customize that, um, specifically for your residents. We work with you on any edits and changes. And then once we get the approval, we let you know the dates that we would mail those out. So the town's always in complete control on what goes out and if and when it does go out. Um, even if you've approved it in the past, we still send it back over for approval. And if we don't get approval, we don't mail. So you're always in control of that. We know sometimes you've got a lot going on. It's not the best time to mail something out. Just let us know, and we can always skip that campaign. And then to give you a quick idea of what our standard letter typically looks like, the beginning is that educational piece, letting your residents know which portion of these lines that they're responsible for. But it is an introductory letter where the town helps to introduce the program to its homeowners. But it always states, we are the company that provides it, and it is one hundred percent optional. It does include the town logo or letterhead, so they know this is a program you're making available to them. But on all of that is all of our information, our logo, our phone number to call with questions or to enroll. Same thing with our website. They can get a lot of great information on there or sign up that way, or they return the letter in the mail to us. Um, we know you all have more than enough going on, so we do handle all the aspects. We do the marketing, the billing, the claims and the customer service. And, um, for your partnership, uh, as I mentioned, no cost to the town to participate. For your partnership, you actually do receive ten percent of all of the premiums we collect on an annual basis, paid to you in the form of a royalty. And a lot of our partners do different things with this. Obviously, you could do anything that you like. Some put it into the general fund, but we also have a lot of partners that will use it to help their residents that may be having trouble paying a utility bill from month to month. Some have used it for different public projects that we know you're always looking for additional funding. Um, and I just talked to a recent partner that used it to make up local park ADA compliance. So it's really however, um, you see fit. Um, and lastly, we do have, um, twenty-six, um, partners, or I think twenty-six partners here. I think the next slide says twenty-five, but I, I think twenty-six partners in the state. Um, we saved Maryland residents fifty-nine million in repair costs. And as I mentioned, not in addition to being endorsed by the National League of Cities, we're partnered with the Maryland Municipal League and the Maryland Rural Water Association. And here is the list of the partners in the state here. And I know I have, um, rambled on to you this evening, so I'm sure you also may have some questions for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's.
Thank you.
It's interesting. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Jay. Um, how often does what she was talking about happen? Like somebody will call you out and you say, oh, that's not really our, our side of it.
Um, we get the call most of the times if it's close in the street and customers aren't sure. And normally we'll respond and we can shut off the water meter. And if it shuts off the leak, then it means on the homeowner's side, obviously we shut it off. So it happens a lot. I, I would say the majority of the ones that a resident would call something in the yard is on their side. Normally when we have a problem, it's kind of in the road. Um, so it happens.
Other questions?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll ask a question, and, and I don't mean to be rude. I know business development's a very challenging, uh, practice to be in. But outside of revenue generation, what is it, what's really in it for the town? Because what you, you kind of proposed here was, hey, we're going to offer a service, we're, we're going to leverage you. hey, we're going to offer a service, we're going to leverage you guys to help us market to your residents, and then we're going to give you some money for it. And honestly, I'm not a big supporter of like trying to benefit off of our residents when taxes are already pretty high and everybody feels it with BG&E and everything else. So, you know, what outside of a 10% profit do we see?
So I guess the first thing that I would say, if the town did not want to receive a revenue, that's no problem. We can decrease the cost for a resident by 50 cents per month if they decide to enroll. I'd say about 75% of our partners receive the revenue, about 25% don't, but it's whatever is best for you. We know not everyone wants to receive that. Honestly, from what I hear, and I've been here for 11 years, working probably, I've probably worked with a close to 450 of our partners across the country, is it's really that educational piece, because homeowners never know these lines are their responsibility. And then they're calling you, asking you for help, people don't have that money to pay for that repair. You know, I was even just talking with someone that's in Ohio, in a city there, you know, it, a homeowner wasn't able to stay in their house because they can't afford the repair, because the cost of the value of their home outweighed the cost of the repair. We often hear, you know, residents are being ripped off or taken advantage of by plumbers coming in, not following your codes, charging them large emergency call-out fees, where we monitor those plumbers to make sure they're meeting your codes, following your standards, and getting all of the proper permits, bringing money back into your local economy. But obviously, you are correct. By partnering with the town, it does help us reach a greater amount of homeowners. But because we reach a greater amount of homeowners, we have more generous coverage for a lower premium. Also, because we are getting a more concentrated amount of enrollments in one community, it allows us to get those local plumbers up and ready, where they're getting a lot of more jobs, and they keep that cost down because they're getting a lot of frequent work from us. But it also helps your residents here have a better service, because they're from here, they're not coming from Baltimore or DC to come to do those jobs, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the responses, so thank you.
And do you guys take commercial clients? And how would you handle multiple households like condos and such like that?
Yeah, so it is for residential only. We do cover up to a four unit. If it's a four unit with one single service line, then only one has to purchase it. But if it's like, you know, a house that's split up and they have multiple service lines, and it's like, you know, 120A and B, then they'd have to purchase two separate properties. A lot of times, if it is like a condo association, sometimes HOA maintains those. So that's what we kind of work on our mailing list before we send anything out, to kind of eliminate ones that wouldn't apply to the coverage. And if they call to enroll, there's a couple like qualifying questions. We ask them, "Are you responding?" Do you own the property as one of them? Because the property owner has to enroll. You know, we do ask if they have an HOA, so that we can understand if that's something that, you know, that the HOA maintains, because we don't want them enrolling in something that, you know, they don't have to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead, please.
Do you administer your program without a marketing agreement or without a town partnership? Like, would you sell to individual residents that might be interested in your services without us endorsing you?
So we have a lot of large energy partners across the US, so there's a chance, like a large electric providers. I live in Pittsburgh, so like ours is Duquesne Light we're partnered with. So, you know, we're partnered with some large energy providers. We do have television commercials, so if they can see us on a television commercial, they might be able to know about it and enroll. The coverage that we offer through a municipal partner, though, is less expensive and more. Our typical television commercial is $7,000 per incident, where this is $8,500.
Okay, so residents could take advantage of this by looking your company up, just based on watching this meeting, even if we didn't enter into a marketing agreement. Is that correct?
Not this coverage, but yes, they could buy on policy, yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming and letting us know that this coverage is out there for everybody. Definitely things to think about.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation, Ashley. Big question, when it comes to a resident, let's say they have a leaky pipe that needs to be, that has led to their water bill being exorbitantly high. Do you offer any kind of support for them to, like, can they use the insurance policy to help cover their water bill? Or is it only to fix the plumbing issue or sewer issue?
So this program, this one is strictly for the repair. We do offer another program. It is a leak protection program. It's set up very differently than this. It's an insurance policy for the town, and it would really replace any adjustments you're currently making. This would become your new leak adjustment policy. But because it's an insurance policy for the town, and your residents are claimants on it, it's set up differently where it's added on the water bill. It's typically about a dollar to $2 per month. But then they could get up between a $500 and a $2,500 bill forgiveness, and essentially we're insuring the town for their lost water.
And could you do that agreement without doing the marketing agreement, or are they?
No, they're two completely separate programs. The one's an insurance policy, so there's actually no agreement. We just entered, it's an insurance policy we provide.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for presenting tonight. We appreciate your being here.
Thanks, everyone, for having me. If you have any other questions, just call or email. I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Next, we have the town administrator's report.
The town administrator's report was submitted as a part of the town council agenda package. So of note, we now offer, the town now offers free notary services to residents Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so that's a new offering. We've also, we're nearing completion when it comes to the water and sewer rate study. So within the next week, I'll be having project recap meeting with our consultants, and they will be available and plan to present in the August, either work session or town council meeting. Outside of that, we're looking at addressing the concerns around water and sewer, not just rates. Not just rates, but making sure that residents are supported holistically. So the service that Ashley just presented on is one way. Obviously, the council has to vote to move forward on that. But that's one option, or one example of how we're trying to meet the needs of the residents. Another is a water and sewer portal, which we're going to be having a demo on in the next few weeks. And that would allow customers to log in and check their water usage in real time. That would allow residents to monitor their usage in real time. And that's important primarily because one of the, we get a lot of calls around, you know, we had a leak but didn't know that we had a leak, and we didn't find out until the quarterly billing, and now our bill is exorbitantly high. And that's challenging. And so right now, the town hall staff doesn't have the bandwidth to be able to monitor water usage for every resident each month. But if we're able to deploy this customer portal, that would allow, that would put the power in the hands of the resident to monitor their own systems. So it's very promising. So details will come to that either within the next, within the next few months. Outside of that, we have the Summer Nights Festival series. It's going to continue tomorrow. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 over at Callum's, so if you're available, please come. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Anybody have any questions for the town administrator?
Oh, I always have a lot of questions for Samelia.
She generally has a lot of answers.
She does. She's very good with answers, yes. So you mentioned NuJid and their report, and I know it was supposed to come in June, and then this report says July, but now it's going to be August, which is okay. But I want to request if we can get a read ahead before the meeting, instead of getting the information a day or two before the meeting. Having a good amount of time for us to digest their report would be very helpful to the council.
Absolutely. And what I, I just want to make sure that, like, just for the record, when NuJid came originally, they were, they have, from my perspective, been consistent about being able to deliver something in July. They were very clear that they weren't going to be able to submit anything that was going to happen before July, and that's why they said it wouldn't be able to inform the budget process. So just want to make sure that we're clear there. And absolutely, once I get the report from them, it'll go over to council for review, and then it'll be included, and the overview and executive summary will be included in the work session packet for public viewing.
Okay, yeah, and even if it's, you know, we get our, we've been getting, I've been asking to work a little bit further out, but, you know, even if you get it sooner than a week, please send it out before the agenda packet, so we can digest it.
Absolutely. It's always my intention to make sure you guys get things well in advance, so if there's ever a delay, it's.
No, I get how things happen. I'm fully aware that it's not always in your control.
But absolutely.
I still have a lot more questions. Do people need to make an appointment for the notary?
No, not at this time.
Okay, that's a great service. Whoever coordinated that, that's a wonderful idea.
We have a great executive coordinator, Wendy Patton, and she is also a notary. So having her on staff expands our capacity as town hall, so.
There you go, easy and free. Those are the best types of things. So moving on to your report about safe routes to school. So I know you've been following up with SHA, and I've been following up with SHA. So we had talked about a piggyback contract, and then I've also, you know, spoke with the grant coordinator, and she mentioned that the next step was a scoping meeting. Do you have a date for that, or has that occurred?
That has not occurred yet. I don't have a date yet from SHA.
Okay, and then the second thing she mentioned was that they're still getting things on outdated templates. And so she sent me all of the current templates, not populated. But I just want to ensure that somebody is following up and making sure that SHA gets what they need on the template that they need, so that we can move forward.
That's news to me. So we, we had a meeting maybe two or three weeks ago with the town attorney, and she's going through all of our templates to make sure that everything we've provided to them is updated. So if we did have a change at SHA with our grants coordinator, so internally to SHA, they had a change in the point of contact for the town. So if there are, to my knowledge, there's not anything that's out of date. They have everything that they need, but if they're communicating something differently, let me know, and I can look into it.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll let you know. She sent me the templates, so you can just maybe compare and see if it's the same version, or see.
She sent you their template?
Yeah, she sent me the most current templates, what apparently they should be.
Yeah, that's, it's all been updated, and what they are telling us, at our last conversation, they have, for the piggybacking process, they were taking what we submitted, and they were going to add it in the format that they needed it in, because they already had all of the information that was needed. So I'm not sure.
Okay, so we'll clarify that, make sure we know whose court everything is in. Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then the tennis courts. My favorite topic. So everybody's excited to see construction. But I, there are a lot of questions. Nobody really knows what is going to go there. So I know you sent out a schematic, and I think what you sent was just for colors?
So I've sent out a couple of schematics. So the original schematic that went to council was, the idea behind that was because council has been very involved in and very invested in this project, making sure that they were okay with the colors. The purpose of that schematic was only to approve colors.
Oh, yeah, so I just want to make sure, and I guess I could ask Wayne as well. But I don't see the lights or bench installation, some of the finer details of the project on your timeline. Is that A, projected in a project schedule, and B, is that projected to be completed at the time of tennis court completion?
I'm going to pass it off to you, Wayne, as the project coordinator for this.
Sure. So, yes, it's all in the project, it's all in the timeline. The benches will be something we're adding. It wasn't in the original base bid, but it's in our budget. So that's, will come when they're completion. The lighting, as you may recall, on our original budget is being done by a different contractor. That contractor is obtaining his permit, and he can't do that work until the fence is up and finished. So yes, it's all in the schedule, it's all in the plans. As you know, now we're in the month-long cure period for the asphalt, which allows some of that work to be done. When it's completely done, I think the lighting and the benches will be the last things that occur, but yes, it's all in the project.
They are scheduled, budgeted, and contracted?
They are budgeted. They are not contracted. The benches are a change order item, which Mid-Atlantic has sent us a change order one, which we're negotiating. The lights, we have contracts to issue, and I've told them to get their permits. We're going to issue the contract. We just haven't issued a contract yet.
Okay, and are they of amounts that you need to bring them to us?
Nope, they're within the budget.
Okay, that's great to know. And so my last and final question is, did you go out to the courts with the contractor that will be painting the courts and measure to ensure that there's going to be room according to basic standards accepted by the court?
So there is room.
Construction industry.
There is room. The pickleball courts overlay on a standard-sized tennis court, it's just industry standard. There is room to do whatever we want. There was a schematic which I sent out. The latest one was today, which actually shows the benches. It shows the new access points. It shows the striping. There's a question that Jay and I are working on with the contractor about shifting the pickleball layout a little bit to even it up on the courts, which I haven't had a chance to talk to him about. But the layout that's there meets industry standards, and there's room for it.
Okay, I just, as long as the distance in the back has been measured, and it meets industry standards, and it's, you know, that's all I want to hear. I don't need to go measure it myself. That, that makes me happy that you guys are paying attention to that. I did see the schematic with the benches, and it shows them kind of in the far corners, which isn't really a typical place to put the benches. They're usually closer to the center net, so that the person sitting on them can watch the match.
The challenge you have there is at center net is your access point. And it's also within the fall distance of the pickleball courts and tennis courts, so they have to be in a proper safety zone, which is why they're in a corner. So if you had a bigger tennis court, which we don't, they could go in the location you're looking for. But the tennis courts were not designed for benches. The only place those benches can go is where I showed them. So they're going to be a place where someone can sit, or get their shoes on, or whatever they're going to do, store their stuff while they go play. They're not going to be a place where you can sit there and watch the tennis match, unless you're watching from one end. Just from a safety perspective, we don't have the ability to expand the court. That's where we have to go.
Okay, yeah, maybe before we install the benches, maybe we might want to think about what we should do about those.
Happy to have a conversation.
Yeah. Just an email, maybe?
We were actually out there earlier. I just want to add one thing, because we had spec originally, the benches, which were, I'm looking at them for the last long, like the Vicky Stanley benches we have at Veterans Park and the Three Pocket Parks. There was a concern brought up that those metal benches could be hot, right? So then we could look at a composite bench. Or even a wooden teak bench, right, which is not going to last as long, but it doesn't have a temperature thing. So I'm just throwing it out there. These benches are off the shelf. We can get whatever the pleasure is, but I want some feedback. Don't have to answer me now, but just keep that in mind, right? Because I want to look at it to last the longest and no maintenance, which is a galvanized powder-coated metal bench. Now, there's concerns when you're out there in tennis shorts, and you sit on a metal bench in the sun, right? So I don't care what we put in, I just want some feedback on it.
And I think John had a good point. If the door's right there, maybe the bench fits outside the court.
We can look at all those options, but we have to pick something sooner than later, but we can get some feedback about that quickly.
And just so that we're clear, our MOU with the Board of Education says that our our field of play is within the fence, so it could not be without that unless we had agreement from the Board of Education.
How are those benches doing at Veterans?
How are those benches doing at Veterans Park? Cause I voted on those benches.
They're doing good. They're doing good. Uh.
They've been Tesla tested and.
That's what I failed.
That's what I was alluding to. Yeah, that's a good one. If they survive that, then they can survive a tennis court.
One other quick point of clarification with S H A, be there are a number of projects going on. So if there's anyone from S H A who's communicating to any council member about what's happening with the grant project. That should always come through the town, not through the council. So I know that the conversations that we've been, that I'm aware of, ha are really more so with their community relations people. Not their grant managers. So if a grant manager is contacting you, please forward that to me. So I can make sure that the town is aware of it, because to my knowledge, when it comes to S H A, we are, we're up to date and good to go. So if they're communicating or if someone's communicating anything differently, that needs to be sent to me like pretty soon.
Okay, I'll I'll forward you. I thought maybe you were on the C C lines, but um I'll forward you.
The the last S H A C uh C C I have is from Kelly Bullware and she's Community Relations Manager. So she wouldn't be communicating about.
That that's for the whole safety. That's a whole.
Yeah.
Different project.
Absolutely. Yeah, just forward. I want to make sure, because ultimately, like, when it comes to the grants, it needs to come through the town. Otherwise, it's, they could be talking to any resident and that doesn't help us move it forward if we're not aware.
Right. Okay, um, so yeah, just to summarize that piece, I'd be interested to know when the scoping meeting. Everybody's excited for that to move forward and it's it's actually moving forward more than it has been than I've seen. So I appreciate that. I just want to make sure it keeps moving forward.
Absolutely.
I'll ask my hard question next meeting. Repeat it for you, Samalia. Thank you for your work.
As always.
Thank you, uh Eric.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'll try to keep it short. Um, for the new gen, we talked about um when they were here. We had talked about them providing some um, so when they make their recommendations as far as structure. Them providing some diverse uh options there, which in which would include models where we can run scenarios. I just wanted to follow up on that and make sure that that's still.
Still the plan.
Okay, cool. Um, and then on page three, under grants and R F P updates. Um, there wa I wanted to see if um the first two items on that.
Yeah.
Are those um, do they coordinate with um items under new business that we're voting on?
The Bio Solids does.
Okay, and then it does number four on the new business. Is there, is that on our R F P list anywhere? Be the um. Or that's number four is a Bio Solids, right? So I'm guessing I'm talking about number three, the Blue Earth.
Right, and that was when we when we met at our work session, that was where um Josh provided insight into why that was the primary. Um, but so that wasn't a R F P process. That was um kind of looked at as a sole source provider, primarily because it's proprietary information or proprietary products that they sell. And and Josh can provide more information on that if you'd like to, or we can wait until you guys go to vote to get the responses to that. Cause I know you had questions out of our session.
Yeah, okay, we can wait. Um, there was some discussion outside um about, again, about the process of. Of sole source and um and there wasn't much of one that I know of. For that one. Um, okay, so. Um, and then I guess the last thing here would be. Oh, everyone's favorite, backyard chickens. What do we, uh, do, are we uh, are we moving forward with repeal of the prohibition of backyard chickens?
Going to invite our uh Planning and Zoning Administrator Sarah Franklin to speak to that. Yes, so the Planning and Zoning Commission uh put this on their August agenda while they finish up signs. So that was when they will be looking at it again.
Okay, great. And that's all I have.
There uh, I can wait. Have you gotten much feedback on the signs from the community?
Um, we've had a few um different comments. Uh, most of them aren't necessarily. The comments aren't anything we're not doing or doing, right? So they they're helpful because we know people are engaged, um, but it's not how, it's not functionally changing what's happening. So.
Thank you. You'll be, you'll be back up in a little bit here.
As many times as you need me to come up.
When we get to that part. Okay, moving on, let's go to the treasurer's report. Dan, Mr. Treasurer. Your microphone turned on?
No, got to get used to that.
Got to get used to that.
Chairman, keep me in line. Um, my report was uh in the council packet. I'll highlight a couple items. Uh, with the passage of the budget uh last month, we've submitted the tax rates to the county. Uh, so they put them on the tax bill of residents and we certified the uh tax rates to the state. Uh, beginning of new fiscal year was July first, so uh employee pay rates, uh new deductions for health insurance. Uh, allocations of salaried various departments all gets updated based on their past budget. So we implemented that at the beginning of the month for the first pay period. I've reached out to the auditors to schedule the fiscal year twenty five audit. Uh, field work is scheduled for September second. Uh, I sat down with the auditors today to go through expectations for the audit to make sure that the report would be filed. Uh, by the due date, which is November first. Uh, I've been in correspondence with the bank and Maryland Local Government Investment Pool. To uh update the signatures on the accounts and have access to the accounts. Um, I've sent out forms to the department heads for both workers' compensation claim submission. And insurance claims for legit, so that as we have those types of claims, uh, they will have the proper forms to submit. So that we get those claims submitted quickly and, you know, hopefully to get, you know, processed accordingly. And the fourth quarter, uh, June thirtieth, utility bills are currently being processed. They should be ready to be mailed out tomorrow. Um, the bottom of the report shows the uh items that were expended over ten thousand dollars. Uh, that we report to the council. You'd notice that the amount is smaller this month. Cause in the past, that limit was five thousand. It's now been increased at ten. Uh, we've also added a note section on there to hopefully explain a little further as to what those are. If there's any other information you want to see on, you know, this list, let me know and we'll include that in future uh reports. Um, that's uh all the items I was going to comment on. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, man.
Uh, yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Eric.
Um, the line item for uh Paddock Swimming Pool Company. Um, is that, cause we had approved up to sixty thousand dollars. Uh, for exploratory investigation testing, provide a scope and budget. Is that the total that they charged us or is that an installment?
Installment.
Okay, do we know what the total of the charge was?
Uh, the total approved was up to sixty thousand. I believe at the last meeting, he felt that he was not going to reach the sixty thousand. But I've not seen any updated uh proposal or updated invoices from since this one.
Do we know the total that has been spent so far?
Uh, that was the first invoice at twenty six, so um, yeah, not seen anything after that. And that was the beginning of June. So, you know, they've definitely done work up until, I think yesterday, there was a report submitted, so.
Okay, thanks.
So he is in fact under contract? The language.
For the sixty thousand, up to sixty thousand is what the council approved, yes.
And so that's like a contract that we can read?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just email you and ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving right along. Uh, it is time for the public works report. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one thing notable, because I'm going to take it off this list, is the C N thirty first Stormwater Pump Station. If you recall, that's the one uh where we had to replace pump one, it failed. And keep in mind, this is general fund, not utility fund. It's a stormwater pump station. And I, we had to replace it because the old pump's obsolete. So pump two, same age, same hours. I just looked at it two days ago. Um, I'm running that to the point of failure purposely, because why get a new one now? We have redundancy. Just letting you know that one day that's going to pop up and that was forty five thousand dollars. Um, with with some rails and a check valve when we do it. So I'm going to take it off my list, but one day, hopefully not too soon. I'll be back here saying we need that pump, but it's planned. I'm just going to run it to to failure. Um, I'm going to save the water park report to the end, even though it's kind of here in the middle. And the rest of it's your standard stuff. I'll take any, any questions and then I'll get into the water park.
Uh, the water tower logo thing, is it, have we had an update on a new cost or anything or is it still the same or what?
We s we had the uh cost, I forget what meeting it was, maybe it was our first meeting as a new administration for the. For the logo presented, and then I had an uh updated cost for the C B. Um, and then we kind of just honestly tabled that because there was different opinions of what we want to put and where. And it's kind of off the radar now. We can relook at that. Um, but right now, I kind of, it's just off of my agenda and off the radar unless it's brought back up.
Yeah, well, the only thing I'm concerned about is if they change the cost or how much it would be for them to do the work or not. The the graphic design and all that stuff that we've been kicking around, it's irrelevant. If if the cost changed, then the whole conversation changed.
Yeah, I think if the cost changes, it'll all be minimal cost of material and and stuff. Um, they're able to do pretty good in uh internal graphic design. So if we pick something, they actually can design it and project it. That wouldn't necessarily change the cost. So I wouldn't anticipate the original two quotes would change that much. But if it's the pleasure of the council, we can, the only thing is, we're going to need a, I've dealt with him and he's back in force, I mean, it's his job to sell it. But he's reviewed and looked at four different designs, four different times, so we need some consensus. Give them one plan. And where we're going to put it and then I could reintroduce it to them.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
So just on that topic, since it was brought up, I know it's not on your agenda, but if we do do that, that's something that all of the community has to look at. And see, and so my expectation would be that we would survey any logo that everybody has to look at.
That's not really a question, but I would say to that, that I probably would never see it because I've never seen the water tower until you said something about it. But the people who would see it are the people who are coming to visit us and they'll see that as a market and say, hey, we finally made it to Chesapeake Beach. So I don't think it's a, and I'm not looking up there. I'm pretty sure none of us look up at that tower.
Wait a minute. Come down the road, you can see it.
All right, yeah, you can.
You can.
Are you looking for it? Most times we pass things because we live here, we don't see the things that visitors would. So this isn't an internal battle. This is about what people see when they come to see us. So if we're talking about amenities and people coming in to visit and do these type of things, then yeah, let's stop thinking about an internal thing. Look at it as an external factor, because this is about people coming to see us, not us looking up at it every day. And that's, that's something that Lori does, and if she does, that's perfectly fine. But I don't, so that's all.
I'll I'll just point out that, well, I'm going to point out that the logo can't even go on there because you can't see it. So that's what you had said at the previous council meetings. It's it's just literally going to be the letter C and the letter B. And the point of contention over here was, I think, well, I didn't care what color it was, but different council members want to go technicolor rainbow and different colors. So it really was either black or blue or whatever color, and that's what Jay was waiting on is a color choice. Cause C B was the only thing that could be legible at any decent distance.
I'm pretty sure this council can get it together for you.
Yeah, I just.
Members are looking at me, but I got nothing to do with it. You tell me what you want to do and I'll make it happen. Or you tell me you don't want to do it and I'll make it go away.
Well, I, uh, same topic. Well, um, you know, I thought that we had, you said that uh the money was there. It's paid for already, right?
It's, let me restate that. It was a grant, so if we spend it, we get reimbursed. If we don't, we are not out money. Just for clarification.
And we, I think we all agreed that we wanted it facing like towards the water park. Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I think we're all in those. I thought we were, I thought we were kind of close to agreement.
I thought we were too.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out by next meeting, man. We'll get it together.
In all honesty, if you come up with some consensus amongst yourselves and and I can get you an updated quote pretty fast.
Boom, let's do that. Thank you. Getting stuff done, guys.
Just for clarification, you do want it on the outside, right? Not the inside? Okay. So I do see the inside.
Did the, did the water tower just have like a overflow issue? Is that from the circuit card issue?
That that was, that was a a circuit board pride with one of our storms. And basically didn't tell the pump to shut off when it reached its P S I, because it's on a transducer, so it just kept running. And it, and it did call out, so we actually had someone coming in to shut it off. Um, but some residents had already seen it because it's close to development, but yes, that's what happened.
Five times or is five, five separate? It says five responses due to the circuit control.
So until we got that board replaced, because it's also obsolete. Um, and I have two on the shelf that are obsolete now too. Uh, we had to manually come in, turn it on when it called for it, turn it back off. There's no way to uh, we can remount, I'm sorry, run it remotely when that board was in place, but without it, we were stuck to manual.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Sure.
Anything else in public work for public work? All right, let's move along.
So I think Mayor was, I was going to present kind of the water park and where we're at under that report.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and I think the council should have received, I know it's late.
Uh, I don't, can I suggest that we move that to the work session? I feel like that's going to take up a whole lot of time and I'd like to have some chance to review it myself. Before we get into discussions on it.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I would, I would defer to Samelia and the mayor.
Yeah, absolutely. It it, the idea wasn't that there would be a discussion necessarily right now. It's just more so presenting it because Paddock owed the council the numbers. And so Jay's just reporting on on that part of it at a high level. If you guys want to continue discussing it, then it would be scheduled for the next work session.
I'm fine with that.
And no discussions.
Yeah, I think we should go to the next report.
Uh, but I am perfectly fine with that too. As long as everyone received the information I received, which I'm sure they did, Samelia gave it out, I'm fine. No more questions for me. We can move on.
Congratulations, man.
We've done that before. Well then, um, all right, so is that it for the public works report?
Yeah, unless there were other questions. Yep.
Great. Josh, it's your turn. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant or the wastewater treatment plant, or to teach an old dog new tricks.
Evening. Just going to go down basically a overview of what was in memo. Um, this month, staff conducted all the routine prescribed uh P M C S work for, that was generated from asset management software. Uh, we did do our quarterly cleaning of and service work for all the U V banks. Um, we did have on the twenty sixth, I didn't put the date on here, I think it was the twenty sixth, we had a tree fall. On the backside of the denitrification uh structure. Uh, the only real damage we had there was one of the lights on a light pole was broken off and some bending to some of the handrails. And to the perimeter fence. We have a insurance uh inspector coming out tomorrow to take a look at the damage and go over that. Uh, we had Windmill Farm remove the tree that weekend, uh, so no permanent damage to the property. That's going to cause any problem with operation of the plant. Uh, we did have a meeting with Anaronda County, which is one of the partners with the uh treatment plant. Uh, for a discussion on the I N I issues we experienced from them. Uh, they gave a pretty detailed report on their plans to mitigate the problems. Um, and they have a plan start for that project of October of this year. And a completion in quarter one of two thousand twenty six. So we'll see where they're at going through there. Their plan is to give me updates through there as they complete. Pretty large sections of its work, so that if we do have a rain event. pretty large sections of its work, so that if we do have a rain event, I can give them feedback, hey, yeah, we are seeing an improvement, or we're not seeing any improvement on our end.
Yeah, can you share that report with me, please, from Anarundel County?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
No problem. Uh, we had a routine compliance inspection from MDE to look at uh everything covered by our discharge permit and our stormwater dis, uh, storm management plan. Uh, they had no issues observed. Uh, we had a biannual inspection for our pressure vessels by Hartford Steam Boiler Inspection Insurance Company, as mandated by the Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulations. Uh, had the annual calibrations of our flow meters in the plant by Welltech, and that's something that we're required to do annually by MDE for our discharge permit. Uh, one big thing, we had a meeting with Maryland Rural Water Association regarding the uh wastewater apprenticeship program, it's something they're starting. Uh, this is a means by which to address the deficiency with licensed wastewater operators in the state. Um, right now, I think the most recent passing rate for the wastewater uh license is about twenty percent. Um, the whole course is a two-year apprenticeship program. The apprentice would work underneath one mentor, which would be a licensed operator at the plant, there would be one apprentice and one mentor. Uh, they are going to go through four thousand hours of documented and structured on-the-job training. Uh, they have two hundred and eighty-eight hours of self-paced online courses that they need to complete. And during that time, uh, in line with, I think, other apprenticeship programs, they're gonna have to be put onto a progressive wage uh pay scale. So if an apprentice that goes on to here, they're gonna be outside of the existing pay scale steps, and they'll be locked into that progression. They have to complete their thousand hours a quarter of uh on ju, on-the-job training, and it's roughly, it bounces back and forth between sixty-eight to seventy-two hours of the uh online courses to be qualified to go to the next step in that uh progressive wage structure, and that's based off of what our operator pay would be, starting at sixty-five percent of that pay rate, and working itself up by ten percent increases. Uh, we have two operators or trainees that we're looking at using, or putting into that program when it starts. Uh, we are waiting for results for the most recent exams. Uh, one is waiting on a result for exam, another one's waiting for a review of an exam from last year. Uh, the Board of Water Works determined that there was a question on the exam that was unduly unfair. Uh, it was requiring a lot of extra calculations to be able to do the work. And they decided that if anybody had failed the exam by one te, one question, and it was determined that was by that one question, that they would be um get credit for that uh one question, and in turn be qualified to be a licensed operator, and we have one individual who does qualify under that, we're waiting for a result back from the state. Um, we had no issues with our shellfish protection tank, uh, where we had to bypass to it, uh, even with the heavy rains. Uh, we've been trying out some new improved processes in the plant to mitigate the impacts from storm flows on the plant, uh, to include preemptive backwashes of the filters prior to the events, to get them to be in as pristine condition as we can before the event, and we are seeing that that is showing uh a marked improvement during a rain event. Uh, we also are including our operational staff. Uh, one person who's on call is a third backup for monitoring during storms, uh, up to now. Uh, myself and Dave, the assistant superintendent, are the only two that had laptops to be able to log into our VPN to do remote access or monitoring the SCADA. Uh, we now have a third laptop that the on-call operator will be taking home, that way they can start being able to do that, and that helps us to uh mitigate any issues. We don't have somebody, one or two people locked in to have to be able to do it. We also had issues where uh loss of power at one person's house, well, now they don't have Wi-Fi, it becomes difficult. Um, so we're trying to spread the wealth out, so we have more options. And that's basically everything I have. If y'all have any questions, I'm sure you probably do.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna highlight the um, the Anarundel issue. I know you talked about that being a major factor in our INI events, and it seems like we're having more frequent, more severe storms, so I think that's, that's great that you're looking into that, and um, I'm looking forward to that report.
Thank you.
I think that's, that sounds like good news to me, too.
So with what they described, uh, it's very ambitious, it's a lot of work to get done. They feel comfortable they can get it done in that timeframe, so.
Well, I, I don't remember the details, but I remember when you've spoken to us in meetings, you know, talking about the inflow from Anarundel during these storm events, it's just been incredible. And, and, and I mean, that's not the, that's, that's not our biggest users, right?
Correct. They're, they're actually the lowest on a dry weather day, they usually produce about seventy-five thousand gallons of flow, and they're the lowest producer during a storm event. They aren't the highest producer, but they'll see the highest increase, we'll see their.
Percentage increase, yeah.
Up over three hundred percent increase in flows.
That's crazy.
Major issue there was their own grinder pumps, and we couldn't do the smoke tests, basically.
Correct, and they're addressing uh, how many do I have on here? There's actually fifty-four grinder pumps that they're gonna be working on, so that's a pretty substantial number. I've been pretty confident that we're gonna find issues on that side, and it looks like they are addressing a lot of stuff.
And we'll be able to track it with the flows from the INIs.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sweet. That all sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Alright, it is time for the town engineers' report. Wayne?
My turn.
Your turn, sir.
Thank you. Um, just reviewing my report, uh, I'll go by, by, by project item. Richfield Station, we did receive some information from the developer. I think Samirian touched on that as well, and as did the mayor in some of the prior discussions, we did have a meeting with them. They did provide some information. Um, we don't have all of it yet, but as they said, we're reviewing the information providers as well as with Sarah. Uh, since writing this report, however, I have also received updated estimates from them. I'm not sure how updated they are, but I've reviewed them initially, and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to him. Maybe some more work for them to be doing there. Um, that's part of the package we need to review and make sure that what we're bonding is adequate, and that's what that's about. Um, SRTS, I'll just clarify the question that you had, Lori, uh, about the template. So the template, there, we met with SAJ, they came back to us and said, oh, by the way, the last template we sent you, that was a new template in, whenever it was, February, it's changed again. So please use a new template.
I know, that's a pain.
Oh, but by the way, um, if you go with our new procurement method, where we're using the piggyback contract, you don't need to worry about the template. And it's a much, much faster, much, much more expedited. So the next day, Samirian, after talking to the mayor, said, let's use the, the new procurement method, which will not have to worry about these changing templates. And we can then push this out to one of their uh piggyback contracted engineers, so they're taking care of that. It's out of our hands, this point, it's in their hands. So we just need to follow up with them, make sure they're doing what, what, what they said they were gonna do. That's what that issue is. So the template issue is no longer an issue.
Very glad.
The template seems to change like once, once a quarter, it's crazy. Um, alright, um, Kellam's Field, uh, we've submitted the as-built drawings to the, to the Calvert County, that should release the permit. Um, water park, we'll get into next time. Uh, Water Recognition Treatment Plant, nothing's changed there, waiting for funding, we have the permit for the, uh, what was it, the wet well uh construction, waiting for that. I'll skip the Bayside Tower, that's not until next April. Um, the Seagate Pump Station, I've been working with the Corps of Engineers and MDE, as well as the fabricator um, that we've talked, been talking to. So we worked with one fabricator who actually went, so fabricators are a dime a dozen, if you, there, there's not many of them, and they're usually a one-man shop. Um, so what we find is that the one fabricator I was working with, the reason we couldn't get a number was because he actually went up in the hospital with cancer. Uh, but I got a number from him, um, when he came back. Um, so I also went to a second fabricator and installer, and I will have updated numbers for you, I just got this stuff, if, if, stuff from him, um, the last one today. Um, but we do have numbers for what that's gonna look like as far as fabricating a new steel gate, installing it, delivering it, which is gonna be interesting. Um, I'll get that information to Samirian for your, for your information. I also have information about rerouting the discharge lines. Um, so we'll talk about that. I'm waiting for an answer from MDE on their permit process. I'm working with two folks who I've worked with elsewhere in other towns for MDE and the Corps, um, to determine what their permit process is gonna look like. Uh, in general, we're gonna require a joint state and federal permit if they're willing to approve it. And that's the big question, are you willing to approve a direct discharge to the bay? And that's a MDE and an Army Corps decision both. So I'll give you information on that, I'll give you a report on that, um, so you have that. Um, let me go to the next page. Uh, Beach Elementary School tennis courts, we've talked about that a lot. Um, it's ongoing, as we, as I said earlier, it's in the cure period, so the asphalt has to cure for thirty days before they can stripe it, which is why we have time to make these decisions about what the striping looks like. And yes, the most important question at this point is, are we okay with the colors? So that's, I'm looking for feedback on the colors. The colors they provided to you are typical USTA colors, we just wanna make sure that's what you want. That's the typical colors, I wanna make sure we're good there. Um, and I'll clarify the, the striping locations, et cetera, for you. Um, Jay and I, before the meeting, have continued to work on the Twenty-Ninth Street drainage issue, I'll be providing some information on that with some uh drainage plans that fix the drainage in that area. And the B Street right-of-way determination, my surveyors have done, have completed their fieldwork, they're compiling the uh, final, final answer now, we'll get that information to you, so we know who owns that property. Yeah, I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, I, I got one, is there anything that we can do, just as a, as a legislative body, to like encourage the state uh, to, and the federal to approve that, like, if we do a letter or anything like that, that would be helpful, or just kinda, it needs to go its course?
What will happen is, we will have a meeting with these two, these two individuals and whoever they all say decide to bring. Um, so I've worked with them on beach replenishment projects, and when I got to the actual chief of the Baltimore area for US Army Corps of Engineers, but not getting any information, I said, I've worked with these two before, can I, can I have them? And he said, yes. Um, so that happened about ten days ago, and they are coordinating their offices. The, one of the problems is, one of the people's out of Arizona, even though they regulate just big day. Um, so they have certain workdays, they have to be in the office, we're coordinating a meeting while, while she's here in this state. So that's the challenge.
I love an Arizona person regularly, that's perfect. Uh, I, also, I'll just point out, I have zero uh clue as to colors of tennis courts, so I'll defer to anybody else uh on that.
Yeah, I would recommend the colors they, they recommended, because that's the standard, but I just wanna make sure we're all happy.
Do we, do we all not respond to the email about the colors?
I like the colors that you are recommending.
Come on, people. Lori, on this one, please move forward with the colors.
I defer to my wife.
Sure, you, you can pick any color you want, there's no requirement, but the ones we provided are the standard colors.
Those, those are great.
They're perfect.
Right.
Okay, I'll move forward. Thank you.
I think that is consensus, by the way, without taking a vote, I think that's consensus.
That's funny.
Give me a direction, I'll keep on going.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Make it happen.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else have any questions for Wayne? Alright, moving forward. Calvert County Sheriff's Office, Twin Beaches deputies' report. Good evening, sir. Been an exciting week.
Did that? Oh. Yeah, uh, June was not too exciting. I'd say Beach was moderately busy. Uh, made two hundred and thirteen traffic stops in June. Uh, that resulted in two DUI arrests. Uh, we made another arrest for uh domestic violence, and we had another one uh arrest at Adner's for disorderly conduct. But um, that was pretty much it for June, but as you said, uh, July's been a little more exciting. Got a jog through Veterans Park. Um, so we're, you know, dealt with that. Um, I believe you have the crash report, at least the draft copy. Um, he, he says he had the, the Tesla on autopilot, which could be true, or he was coming off the night shift, so he, he might have fell asleep too. Um, either way, I don't think he was awake when that car went through there. Um, so, so we're dealing with that. The uh, the fireworks from a public safety standpoint went very well, we didn't have to make any arrests. Um, we, I, we had the traffic pretty much cleared out within about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes. So that wasn't too bad. Uh, we didn't even have a fender bender, so, so that went very well. Uh, of course, an hour or so later, we had the shooting incident down at Neptune's that we've been dealing with. Um, that started as an altercation between a couple guys and the staff at Neptune's, and one of the guys went up to his car, retrieved a gun, and fired a few shots down the street uh at some people. So we did a search warrant on a house, we recovered a couple guns, one of them was stolen. Uh, even the car they were driving was stolen, out of Laurel. So uh, we have two held on no bond for that, for attempted murder, and uh, we even have a third suspect charged for trying to conceal evidence. You know, so, so that's where we're at, unfortunately, it, it has been a little too exciting in July already, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, John, go ahead.
I, I am a little concerned with the uh, the mental health, the amount of mental health issues we're having, but I did wanna praise that we didn't have any overdoses this year so far, so.
We've had one in North Beach, uh, but not over here.
Yeah, and we gotta be careful with that, because those are not reported overdoses, because people do have Narcan now, and have ways to stop themselves from overdosing at home. It might not be reported. We do have different things happening in the county still. We had a, a young girl, uh, underage girl that overdosed, that was on the report recently, so we still need to be vigilant about it, and that kind of go pom-poms up, you know, because people are still dealing with this, but we are doing a good job of making sure that we're not having it reported in the town of Chesapeake Beach.
Yeah, I agree, Councilman, it's, it's, we're definitely not saying it's not a problem, it's like you said, with Narcan being more readily available, um, there's a lot of overdoses that we'll never know about that occur, so.
Um, I, I had one question for you, Lieutenant, is, is there a, can we maybe look at adding into the rotation of the parked cars that we, that you're posturing, and maybe looking at Cox Road? Um, I've had a, I've had a ton of residents in the last two weeks, just say cars are just flying.
That's been for six years that I've lived there.
Yeah, I, I know, and I know they're parked in some other spots that are great, but just maybe, every once in a blue moon, just toss it on Cox Road, just because, I mean, I, I've literally, I think this, this past week alone had five different residents, mainly up on Cox Road, just talking about kids, you know, there are a lot of kids on scooters right now while school's out and running around, so.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care of it. Uh, tonight or tomorrow morning, the latest, so.
Do you have other questions?
I have one question and one comment. Um, so that's the first I actually heard about the Neptune's shooting. Um, I don't know, yeah, I've been hiding, I've been working. Uh, but the question about it is, uh, the resident, I mean, the people who were arrested, the shooters, are they residents of the town?
Uh, one is um kind of transient, but has most recently been staying in friendship. And then one has a, a dress in Virginia. So Falls Church, Virginia, so.
Where I grew up. No wonder I had to move down here to get away from all of them.
One comment, um, the risk of embarrassing my wife, who's here tonight. Uh, she recently um completed a certificate um issued by uh Calvert County Sheriff's Office for Citizens Police Academy. And uh, so she's had a good time, she had a great experience. So everybody's gonna watch out for her. They'll be running around making a bunch of citizen arrests now, and like.
If you can start with Eric.
Right, he's on the investigation, man.
Lieutenant.
Congratulations. Um, when and where is the night out? You have a community night out coming up?
Um, yeah, you mean National Night Out?
Yeah.
It's uh, I, I wanna say it's August, I'll have to pull it up and get it to you. Yeah.
Make sure it gets to the community.
Richfield Station in on it this year.
Yeah, maybe we could put it in our eBlast or something. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Thanks, Lieutenant Holliday, appreciate it, appreciate all your hard work. Um, is there anybody here from North Beach Volunteer Fire Department? We do have the written report. Um, and it's uh in your hands, uh, forty-four fires, uh, ten EMSSS, um, one hazmat, one hel, three helicopter landings, so forth and so on. Calls dispatch, fire calls dispatched in Chesapeake Beach thirty-two, uh, fire calls dispatched in Town North Beach is twelve. Um, and that's what's there. Does anybody have any comments, or, I don't know that we can answer any questions, but does anybody have any comments? Alright, moving forward. Um, Mayor's Report, I don't have much to talk about. Um, oh yeah, well, why don't you fill us in on the dragon boat?
We won the mayor's cup, so that's something to celebrate.
Where's, where's the trophy?
It's, I think it's in the office over there.
Oh, yeah.
I think I grab it.
We should have it out here tonight, yeah, and, and that was fun, that was great fun, yeah, go grab it. Uh, yeah, exercise, et cetera, like, and that was fun, because uh North Beach won it last year, so we won it this year, so. Uh, and it was close, it was a close race. Uh, and I was uh very happy to be out there, and I guarantee you, I won't be out there roaming, I don't wanna make you lose. Um, the other thing is uh, the MML conference now, did we cover that last month? We did, okay, so I don't need to say much about that. All the councilmen. We did. Okay. So I don't need to say much about that. All the council members that were there, that was great. And on July 2nd, we sought, we announced and sought people of interest for the vacant council seat. There you go. We sat right on the corner there. Yeah, it's right on the corner. Thank you. But at any rate, July 2nd, we announced the, that, you know, to send in your interest to serve in the vacant council seat vacated by Kathleen Boral. And the deadline for making those submissions is July 31st. And I gather we already have four submissions and hopefully we'll have more to select from. And I don't have much else to add other than that, other than I think there, there may be a reason to stick around a little bit after the end of the meeting. And, okay. Let's get down to the resolutions and ordinances.
Mayor, can I make a point of, a point of information with regards to the, the discussion earlier? So I had specifically called out that I thought that there was a vote that occurred changing the, the ordinance. So I did look that up and I did share it with Alyssa just to validate me. It did pass November 21st and changed all ordinance votes from five out of six to four. So I just wanted to, since I brought it up and as part of discussion, want to make a point of information, the override veto for all overrides.
Yes, and I knew that the previous administration had done what they could to make it more difficult. Well, that's a fact. But you know what? This council's working so well together. I don't think this is going to be an issue. All right, it is time for resolutions and ordinances. We're going to vote on Charter Amendment, Amendment Resolution, CAR-25-2, Resolution of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, Amending Section C-723 Purchasing and Contract of the Town Charter to Incorporate a Provision Allowing the Council to Waive the Competitive Procurement Requirement Set Forth in that section for good cause upon certain commissions. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
I make a motion to amend. As talked about earlier in this meeting, I would like to make two motions to amend. I'll just do, we'll just do them one at a time. Motion number one is to change the vote threshold to what I believe the attorney intended, which is a five, six vote instead of a two, three vote. So I moved to just slash two thirds and replace it with five, six. And I'll just say that, you know, for something like this to eliminate the RFP or bidding process, I would, I agree with the attorney or her initial thought process, which is, you know, I believe, I don't want to speak for you, but I, I believe it's, you want to be more deliberate about something like this because, you know, you, you do want to be, do your due diligence with contracts with public money.
Okay. Is there a second to that, to the, to the motion to amend?
Which, which amendment was that?
This is just changing the vote from basically needing four votes to forego the bidding process and changing it to needing five out of six before go the bidding process.
But if there's only five people present, it would have to be unanimous? I don't agree.
We have, we have a second. We need a second before.
Is there a second? Okay, motion fails for lack of a second.
And then my second motion to amend is as you're reading through this in the second line where it says good cause, to replace good cause with emergency situations. And on that same line, starting with, or at, after where, where it says the public interest would be served by, we had, we would replace that with where an emergency justifies such a waiver. And then on the fourth line, after determination, where it says that the public interest would be so served, just we would have, that whole line would read includes a statement of facts supporting the determination of an emergency.
Okay, that's a motion to make those changes. I take it.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Is, is it okay if I responded at just, just before? I'm gonna second it, but I want to have a discussion first, okay? If we change this from good cause to emergency, then that means that Public Works, Water Treatment and our engineer are going to start having more problems getting things done that they've been getting done easier with just the way that it already is. The way, so if we take away, if we take away good cause and go for emergency, then that means the work that's already been done can have hiccups. And it's like we don't trust them. And then there's, we don't trust ourselves. And that's the reason why I'm worried about that wording is because we have something today that was done from good cause, from a sole source that we're going to vote on. And we've been working with these people for years and it hasn't been an issue. So if we do that today, then it's now has to be an emergency, which means that we'll have a pushback on the things that have been working well already. Instead of just making sure that we do our due diligence to make sure the process is easier and we do better with votes after the fact when we actually come up with something that we need to vote on. But that has a fiscal issue that we need to be on top of. So I just want to put that out there to make sure that we understand that that's what the difference would be if we make it an emergency instead of good cause, because we're working fine with good cause as is. But it looks like we're getting more things to put it in perspective so that we can kind of mold it going forward to make sure the process is straight. So.
I just, I think there's a misunderstanding because you currently don't have a good cause exception at all.
We don't have an exception at all. So good cause is better than emergency now. I mean, it's as simple as that. If we, if we, if we're looking at Blue Earth, that's a good cause. That's not an emergency. So we're going to make it harder now going forward. And if we do that, then we're kind of putting handcuffs on our, on the people we trust to take care of things for the town. So we got to be really particular about that wording. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, so we have a motion for a change without a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would just like to respond. You know, the, the good causes is just very vague and you can, you can forego the, the bidding process. The point of the bidding process is so that we as a council are doing our due diligence with attempting to get the best price and the best contractor and, you know, I had spoke with Amelia, well, we, we texted and asked her about the, I'm sorry.
Amelia. Amelia Earhart.
What the S?
The silent. What, what she said, I inquired about the amount of time and duration that we would need to put out RFPs for certain amounts and such. And I believe she said 21 days for 50,000 or more, which is not a whole lot of time. If it's an emergency, because it's time sensitive, because the, the wastewater treatment plant needs something immediately because of an emergency, changing this ordinance to have this emergency language would be suitable, I think. And 21 days is just, it's, it's not, I don't believe that that's too much to ask for, for the council to do due diligence in the bidding process.
And you've got a comment?
Yeah. So again, I think, I think that we're then constricting this strictly to emergency type asks, which are already laid out in our charter, but I would say that the RFP 21 days is the response process. You're not taking into account the time required of the staff to put together an RFP. And, and, you know, this isn't tied to the water park, but the water park is a great example because we asked Jay how long it would take to put this RFP together and he said months and months and months. Now, I'm not, that was obviously a massive project, but if you could just extrapolate that concept to everything that could potentially. And then the second point I would just make is it still requires four out of the six council members. So I think we were elected to, to manage the legislative process and the budget effectively. And again, inconsistent with what the previous administration was doing. I think this still all fits fine. We don't, I don't need it to be an emergency situation.
Yeah, I think we're covered, especially with the statement of facts. Like, is that going to be public, that statement of facts? Okay, so it's going to be justified with the statement of facts anyway. So it's not like we can just use it for whatever we choose. It's got to be justified.
Any further comments? All right. So there's an amendment proposed. Those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying no. Okay, the amendment fails. So we're back to.
We're about to vote on now?
Yes, of course.
Does the language in this require four votes or five votes? Is it two thirds of the quorum or two thirds of the council?
Two thirds of the members of the council.
Well, it requires five votes.
Two thirds would be four. Four, six, two thirds, seven.
Councilman, my heart, it pointed out to me was that two thirds didn't add anything because at a majority rate, it is the same as majority. So unless there was, I suppose, a person absent.
Two thirds of the six of us, not including the mayor. Is that what that means? Okay, now, now it's all clicking. It's doing seven and I could not do that math.
Clearly, I couldn't.
If one person was absent, it would still need four votes.
Okay, are we ready to move forward with the vote?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of CAR-25-2 indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, so let the record reflect, we have four in favor and one opposed. Thank you, counsel. That was a good discussion. All right. Next, we have ordinance O-25-11 ordinance of the Maritime Council, Chesapeake Beach clarifying the provisions of Chapter 200 Property Maintenance, Section 200-1, Existing Structures Maintenance and Repairs and Section 200-3 Sanitary Maintenance Prohibit Accumulations of Stagnant Water and Other Conditions That Contribute to Mosquito Breeding. And I, I want to, I want to thank Jamie for stepping in on this because I think the work that you have done has made this more clear and, and more straightforward. And so just thank you for that. Is there a motion for approval?
That's the ordinance.
It's just introduced.
All right, I'm sorry, just an introduction. Oh, it didn't say that here. Okay, so the public hearing date will be the next council meeting? What?
It's August 21st.
August 21st. Okay, so it'll be August 21st. I'm sorry. Okay, good. We're going to go faster now. I'm sorry. Six fifteen. That seems to work for everybody, I believe. Okay, now we'll introduce ordinance O-25-12. An ordinance that's of Mayor and Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, amending the Town Code, Chapter 290 Zoning, Article 4, Overlay and Floating Districts, Section 290-17 Critical Area Overlay District and Section 290-18 Growth Allocation and Article 11 Definitions, Section 290-44 Critical Area Definitions, all to conform to the town's critical area program to the requirements of the Maryland Critical Area Commission. And we will schedule that hearing immediately following the previous hearing next month. And so that would be that.
May I make a comment?
Well, we're just doing an introduction.
Yeah, it's kind of a general comment about ordinances. This, I don't have a problem with this particular ordinance, but when we get zoning ordinances, I'd like to request that we at least get a work session to ask the planner questions before we introduce it in the future.
All right, next, we're going to introduce Charter Amendment Resolution, CAR-25-3 Resolution, the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Amending Section C-303 Meetings of the Town Charter to Delete the Times Specified for the Commencement of the Town Council Meetings to Allow the Mayor to Determine the Time of Commencement. And so that will follow, that hearing will follow the previous two hearings in the month of August. Okay. Next. It is time for the Planning and Zoning Meeting Report. Eric. Good? Yeah.
Share person is here, but there's. I think everything is in the planning and zoning.
Okay. Can I, can I just make a comment, please, regarding this? If just, this actually goes to Laura's point. As we get closer to when this signed ordinance is going to come forward, we'd love to hear somebody complaining of zoning and then as well as like understanding the impacts to, because I have read the draft. Again, it's very lengthy and not easy to necessarily follow. I'm not a sign person either, but I just want to make sure it's, it's, we're not over indexing on regulation.
Thank you. Board of Appeals, no hearing was held. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society. Welcome.
You have the report. It's been very quiet this summer. We, we were on pause in July. But in August, we will start picking up, getting ready for the fifth grade field trips, which start the week of Labor Day in September. So we'll be getting ready in August. And I would just like to encourage all of you, if you haven't had a chance to come out and spend even an hour or two with us on any one of the days that we do the field trips, which run pretty much every school day from September to the end of October. It is a fascinating, fascinating program put on by chess packs. And because you do fund our group and we support them, I think it's really important they come out and see how the money is being spent. It's a really good time. So we send out, I will be sending out a schedule of all the specific dates and the times. The times the students are actually onsite is typically between 10 and 1 each workday. It would be fun to have you all one at a time or all together, come out and just see what's happening and how this program runs.
Well, having, having been one of the ones that initiated Seabox, I'm really great, happy to hear that this is still ongoing. I haven't been out there in years, but I will be joining you. So make sure you contact me. Yeah. Yeah.
And I know I probably mentioned this, I think I mentioned it, you folks, it might have been to last year's group. But Seabox did win the state Maryland DAR Community Service Award for 2025 for our program. And the thing that was exciting about it to us is we did not apply for this award. Somebody talked to somebody to talk to somebody who got to DAR and they found us. And they interviewed students, they interviewed teachers, and they interviewed us. And out of all of the submissions for the entire state, we were one of two groups that was selected. So we're. And if we could just skip the next two down to green team since I'm here already.
I don't believe anybody is here from the election. Oh, you, oh, well, well, we'll flip it.
Standing here anyways. Green team right now, we've been working this summer. We will go into a slight lull because in this heat of July and August, we really don't do too much. We've gotten approval. We've gotten approval to, um, and we have designed a small garden area to be put in at the Schissler Pocket Park because right now it's just a cement pad. And so we kinda wanna cover up some of the cement uh area and, and make it look nice. And what we're going to do, because it backs up to Bia and Bia has the outside area, they have it landscaped, we're gonna mirror that so that they, they coordinate and go together. But we will do that in September, October, when the weather for planting gets better. And the other thing we have coming up that I just do wanna uh bring up to the meeting is September 27th or 8th, that's a Saturday after Taste of the Beaches, we will be doing the paddle and pathway pick-up program, which is, we do it in conjunction with Parks and Rec. And um we will be providing kayaks. People wanna bring their own kayaks or canoes, they can come out. And we will be going up Fishing Creek and cleaning the side areas of Fishing Creek because after the summer and the boating season, we get a lot of trash accumulating on the sides of the creek. And we will also have people going up the actual trail itself and doing some cleanup. But the primary focus is to get out on the water and clean up the river's edge as we go. So we really encourage everybody to come out for that.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much it.
Anybody have a question? Thank you so much and thanks for everything that you're doing. All right, Election Committee, we, but I don't believe there's any report. There is, okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm just gonna make a comment and we, we put this on here because um this committee is gonna be getting geared up soon and uh doing, doing the work that it's intended to do. But um as of now, we have uh myself and Councilman Green um and uh Randy at the Board of Elections and I think there's another guy, Vic, is it Victor?
Mm-hmm, I believe that's right.
There's four of us now. Um, we're looking to fill this committee out with at least two people from the public. Um, and we, we would really like to get uh some public representation on this committee. And I believe Samelia is gonna um put out a call on the e-blast here shortly. But I just wanted to make that comment here as well for the record. If anyone's listening or here today who's interested, um, just contact the town.
Great, thanks, Eric. And, and uh Randy, for those of you that didn't hear, Randy did come to us uh a month or two ago and said that there really are gonna be substantial changes in the, in the election process going forward. So this is something that we need to pay attention to now so that we're ready for it in three and a half years. So please, if you, if you can volunteer, not that I'm looking at anybody, um, but it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. All right, uh, Kellam's Revitalization Committee.
Um, just a quick, uh, we're just working through a survey to get uh some feedback on the, the final changes or the recommendations that we had received. And then once that's done, um, I will clean up uh the, the map and, and re-show it to the council. And then um, uh, at that point, I'll, I'll hand it over to Wayne to see if we can do something a little more professional and, and real.
Right, thank you. All right, moving along, the Twin Beach Community Health Coalition.
Uh, we are gearing up for the International Overdose Awareness Day event in August, August 30th. Uh, we decided not to do it on August 30th, which is actually uh International Overdose Awareness Day because that would be a school night for folks. Um, so we're gonna have it on a Saturday night. Uh, we have our speaker already for the event and we've already brought on Katie Brinkley, who is a mural artist that is gonna be creating a mural at the Eagle Pavilion Building in the um, in Kellam's Field. So I'm gonna be helping Jamie out a little bit by making it look nicer over there. Uh, what we'll be doing that night for the uh Glowlight Vigil is inviting people out who have lost someone to an overdose and they can write their names on the wall and then we'll do the mural over the names and pretty much use the quote, uh, wherever there's flowers, there's hope. I think that's uh Lady Bird's quote. Um, and, you know, we'll be there from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and then I think it's gonna be something else after. But uh, we'll be able to um have a board of what the art is gonna look like so that night we can put the names up on the wall and then she'll do the artwork after that. And then we can go do an unveiling of the mural another day uh soon after it's done. Um, other than that, we're working on different things, uh, some stuff for mental health, some stuff for physical health. Uh, we're kinda restructuring our message, looking at things that we can do, like have a QR code that has resources that's updated every six months so that people who have our verbiage can look at it. And we also uh revamping our stakeholders so that we can do things like big park workout sessions or uh some stuff at the beach where people can do glow lanterns and put some affirmations in there and put them out there for their mental health and relief. So we're looking at a couple of great ideas, we're doing pretty good. Savannah's been really good at helping us out and making sure we get our new uh swag in. So we are moving together pretty good. But yeah, so I'm, I'm making it look good for you, Jamie.
Thank you, thanks, Anthony. Anybody got any questions for Anthony? Okay, uh, Walkability Committee.
This is. Yeah, so we had our first meeting in June and um I thought it was a great success. I'm really excited about this team. We're um, you know, small but mighty, just like the old Walkable Community Advisory Group was, but just with fresh, new people. Um, I'd like to thank Martha for all her work. Um, she's been updating the website with our co-chair. And um, I'd also like to thank the members who stepped up in between meetings. I, I asked if anybody wanted to volunteer to take on some tasks and people have really stepped up researching the RTP program. People have expressed an interest in um supporting the application for Sustainable Maryland. Um, and so I think the group is gonna be very strong and I'm very excited. Our next meeting is July 22nd. We'll approve the minutes and after that, I'll, I'll still continue to track so you're not getting rid of my long report. But it will include minutes for our meetings in the future.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you, Laura. Next, the Water Park Committee.
Yep, nothing, um, nothing too new there. We had a meeting right before this meeting and um we got the layout, the design plans that Paddock presented and kinda discussed them. And I think uh Maryland might take some things back to Paddock and see, um, ask them a couple of questions. But uh, the next meeting will be 5:30 uh on August 21st, right before the council meeting.
Great, any questions? Thank you all. Uh, seeing no unfinished business, we'll go to new business. Uh, Town Council to consider the reappointment of Chris Smith to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term?
Mr. Mayor, um, I would like to make a motion about, concerning number one and number two under new business to uh table it um until next month. And if I can get a second.
I'll second it.
Um, I can explain a little bit more. Um, really, we, I think uh at least Jamie and I agree and, and, and I'm not sure, I haven't spoken to anyone else about this, but um we, we would really like to have an opportunity for these people because I, I don't know these people and neither does Jamie. So maybe if they could come in.
Neither do I.
Okay, so maybe it would be a great idea to uh build them into the work session where they can come and speak at the podium, introduce themselves to us and we can ask them a question or two and so we know who, who we're voting for, is what I'm thinking.
Well, uh, is, is there a motion to table then?
I motioned to table.
I second.
He seconded, yeah.
All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. So uh, staff will work to get, make sure that we have that opportunity to meet with Chris Smith. Um, okay, number two, Town Council to consider the reappointment of Fred Sussman.
Number one and two.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, I, all right, I mean, I, I know Fred Sussman, so I guess, uh, but we could, we'll do number one and two, as you say. Um, all right, next, number three, Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Blue Earth for $79,391.56 from the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. FY '26 capital improvement line items budgeted, uh, which is budgeted. And um you did talk, you talked about it during the work session, but do you wanna have other comments you wanna make now?
Yeah. Um, following the work session, there was concerns regarding in the charter agreement about um the $60,000 limit where it's supposed to have RFP. Um, I've been working in wastewater for 23 years, working as a supervisor for over 15. Um, I've had this discussion many times. Uh, in, in this field, there are many instances where you're going to come across contractor services or products that are sole source. Where you're, you're, you could put an RFP out, but you're not gonna get a bid for that item or that service aside from the one you had already looked at. Um, looking in the charter and Jamie had mentioned it earlier, uh, Section 723, I, uh, does have wording in there saying the provisions of this section shall not apply to services furnished by town employees to professional services or to such services which are in their nature unusual and not subject to competition. I read that as sole source.
It's sole source.
Um, I have received a letter from Blue Earth that they are sole source for the products, they're sole source for the work and sole source for the methods. We had used them before. Uh, the first time they used them, I wasn't even, didn't even work for the town, I still worked for Calver County. Uh, the second time around, there was no RFP sent out for the work. We did the exact same thing we're proposing this time. If the council wants us to go out as an RFP, we can. But we very likely are just gonna get one bid back from Blue Earth for the same amount we have already received.
Well, and if I, if I understand it correctly, if I recall correctly, this is a, the service that they provide is unique to them, if I'm not mistaken. And otherwise, we would have to spend way more money to accomplish the same thing, as I recall?
Um, there are no other vendors that do the.
I understand, but it would mean.
My knowledge, from what they're, they're saying, they are sole source for the service. I've had phone calls from uh municipalities in Miami uh regarding work that Blue Earth is proposing for them to do this exact same work. I just addressed an email this morning to Melbourne, Australia for this work, for cleaning filter media.
Yeah.
Uh, most municipalities, uh, generally, they discard the media once it's.
That's what I was hitting that, you shared that with me before. So in other words, they would just discard the media and replace it. And how much more does that cost than doing the renovate, the cleaning?
I haven't actually got a 100, right cost on it. A couple of years ago, it had been looked at, it was $1.5 million.
And.
And that would be every seven to 10 years.
Okay, and so we're spending $79,391 to not spend a million and a half dollars.
Correct. And we're already at the lifespan of the media. We're at a little over 10 years, I believe, on that media.
But you expect that because of the cleaning, that it will continue to be serviceable for quite some time, is that not correct?
That is correct. It, the media is basically just gravel. As long as the size of the media doesn't get so small to where the voids between it would get too small for uh the standards for media in a filter.
Yeah.
We could extend the lifespan indefinitely.
Okay.
Uh, we would be looking at, if we did the cleaning every two years, uh, at, if it stayed roughly $80,000 over a 10-year period, we'd spend $100,000 versus 1.5 million or more, expected to be more.
Okay, that makes it uh very clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Eric.
No, I just wanna thank you for that uh information and clarification and bringing deliberate, deliberate, a deliberate process to uh do this uh vote of a sole source. I feel comfortable doing it, so thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that comment, Eric. I mean, in this, we had this conversation before the meeting and uh I just wanted to make sure that you all understood why, why we're doing this as a sole source. Okay, and I think that made it very clear. Thank you, Josh. All right, is there a motion for approval?
That's not approved.
Is there a second?
Again.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, next, we have uh the final item under new business. Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Syngro for $170.25 per wet ton with an average of 1,700 wet tons a year from the waste, uh, the Chesapeake Beach Water, I'm sorry, wastewater treatment plant. I'll, I'll never get it right. Um, FY '26 landfill tipping fees uh line item, and this is budgeted. And we did talk about it during the work session. Uh, this, is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. This is the time for public comment. Is there any public comment? Hearing none? I think it's time for adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
I can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before you run out the door, there may be something else going on. Don't run out the door. Maybe you can elaborate.
We're gonna be celebrating the mayor's birthday directly following the town, the adjournment of the meeting. So I, please stay for cake if you'd like to have some.
Please stay, please join us. Again, let them eat cake. Thank you all very much for attending tonight and thank you for your participation.
The critical areas is.